Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our Board of Supervisors meeting of November 28th. And if we could have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Chairman Drone. Supervisor Bushnell?
Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisor Bone?
Good morning, Mickey.
Good morning, Supervisor, sorry, Wilson. I'm sorry.
Present.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Madron.
Present.
Thank you.
Please join us for the salute to the flag. The Gland Legion is the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you very much. So I just wanted to make a quick comment as Chair of the Board. As an update, I wanted to say that I have initiated a few changes to our agenda and meeting process. Our last meeting for me was very challenging and frustrating. Anytime we go for eight, nine, 10 hours without any breaks, it just becomes very difficult. So I just wanted to say that and apologize for any part I might have played in allowing that to happen. So one of the lessons I learned from that experience was that at the beginning of our agenda review, which we do usually on Thursday of the week before, I've now asked staff to really consider whether or not the agenda items all need to be on there. In particular, when we start agenda review and there's a massive agenda, much like we have today. And so I've asked that we now try to push things out where we can and try and level out the meetings so we don't have some incredibly long and some really short. So that was one of the changes. The other one was that none of us are able to make really good decisions and the meetings actually go a lot longer when we don't take breaks. And so taking breaks is part of maintaining our own health and our ability to make good decisions. And so I'm going to be trying to work hard with the Board to make sure that we are able to take those breaks so we can make the best decisions we can for the community. And so with that, I will continue to serve as Chair for the rest of the year. And of course, that is always at the privilege or the concurrence of the rest of the Board. And I want to thank the staff and the Board for all of their help in regards to trying to run efficient and meaningful meetings for our community. So with that, Madam CAO, do you have any modifications to the agenda?
Good morning, Chairman Drone. There are no modifications to the agenda today.
Okay, great. So with that, we're going to start with our consent agenda, the consent calendar. And are there any clarifying questions from any of the Board members in regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none, we do have one proclamation that Supervisor Bone is going to read for us. Supervisor Bone?
Thank you, still-serving Chair Madron. Is, who's here from the adoptions? I knew that, Mickey. I just forced you to come up. I really appreciate all the work you guys do. Whereas every child and youth deserves to grow up in a loving, nurturing, permanent family, and whereas Adoption Awareness Month works to increase awareness, bring attention to the need for permanent families for children and youth in the foster care system. Whereas securing lifelong nurturing connections for children and youth in foster care, both legally and emotionally, is critical in determining their future achievement, health, and well-being. Whereas adoptive parents can provide stable, loving families and a safe and comforting place for children and youth in need. Whereas the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services recognizes and honors the important work completed by Child Welfare Services and Social Workers to improve, to ensure timely and supportive adoption services in Humboldt County. Whereas over the year, CWS has worked collaboratively with state partners to transition adoption services in Humboldt County to the California Department of Social Services, State Adoptions. Whereas CWS continues to work collaboratively with CDSS state adoption teams to ensure a smooth transition between systems for youth and adoptive families. Whereas the Arcadale Regional Office of CDSS and Adoption Horizons acknowledged and places great importance on keeping adopted children and youth with their siblings whenever possible and keeping them connected to their birth family, community, tribes, and culture. Whereas approximately 264 Humboldt County children and youth are currently placed in foster care, and some of these children and youth will need permanent adoptive homes. And research shows improved outcomes from children and youth provided with the stability and permanency that adoption offers. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize November 2023 as Adoption Awareness Month and urges its citizens to celebrate and support the diversity, richness of our adoptive families and who provide these special children and youth a place to call home.
Yes.
We'd just like to thank you for recognizing adoptive parents. I'm Mickey Harrison. I'm from Wayfinder Family Services. And we have, since May of this year, have the contract through CDSS to provide post-adoption services for Humboldt County now. So I'm really excited. I'm a Humboldt County native, and I'm glad to see we're getting those kinds of services in this county for families.
And I'd like to say thank you as well. My name is Melody Mitchell, and I'm the Business Development Officer for a wraparound program that serves Humboldt County and 22 other counties in Northern California. And offering services for families who have adopted via the foster care system can sometimes be challenging. And so we want to thank you for honoring families who have made the choice to adopt by this proclamation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And this is a great time to give us our appreciation. Very, very important work that gets done by this organization. I was adopted. I've got six foster kids that are adopted grandchildren now. And it is an incredible experience. And so thank you all for your work in our community. Very much appreciated. And I'm sure there are many here in the audience that are also probably adopted, you know? So it's an important thing for children to be able to have those parents to step up and do that work. So thank you so much. All right. So at this point, we'll do a public comment, and we will start out with Zoom. And I believe there are a couple folks in the Zoom. I'm looking here now, and we don't have any hands up at this time, though, as I see. Mickey? Yeah? Okay, so we'll go to those here in the audience today. If you would like to comment on our consent calendar, please step forward to the podium, and you'll have two minutes. I forgot to mention that, but with the full agenda today, we will have public comment at two minutes, and I'll remind us as we go along. And if you are in Zoom, it's good to be able to press nine, star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to unmute. I don't see anybody there now, but if you are in Zoom and you watch the archive, it is delayed by a half a minute to a minute. So it's important to recognize that. But again, anybody here in the audience today that would like to speak on our consent calendar? Seeing nobody come forward, that's interesting. Okay, yes, welcome, Connie.
Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I'd just like to say thank you to Mickey Harrison, all other families that choose to adopt our children in the community. I think Mickey, I'm not even sure how many years she's been doing this, but a really long time. So I just appreciate her and everyone else that does this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Yes. All right, anybody else? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here to the Board. Any comments, questions, discussion, or motions by the Board?
I think when we see organizations like Mickey has and her crew work with the HHS in such an amicable relationship, it provides better results. And as Mike's famous line is, the fabric of society becomes stronger when you can do those kinds of things. So I appreciate the agencies working together, because we usually don't, we don't have that as often as we'd like, and they're working in tandem very well.
Great. Any other comments from Board members? Supervisor Bushnell?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second. So we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell, and a second by Supervisor Wilson. Any final discussion? Seeing none. Let's, do we all have our I-legislates up? I see a few. Are you up? See if we can try and do that today.
I did press.
Yours is not working, huh? Oh, you did. Okay, great. All right, so we'll go ahead and do a roll call, please, Nikki.
Okay, thank you. Chairman Drone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero.
Great, thank you very much, Nikki. All right, with that, we'll go to public comment on non-agenda items. So this is opportunity for members of the public to speak with the Board and the community in regards to something that is not on our agenda. And you will have two minutes. So we'll start with Zoom, and I do not see any hands up there either still.
Chairman Drone, I have 0116 with their hand up.
Okay. Oh, I see my thing. I need to collapse my screen a little bit. All right, 0116, star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hello. Ever?
Yes, we can.
Hey there, Ash Teeter, LostCoastPopulist.com. Just wanted to talk a little bit today about autonomy, you know, personal autonomy, just how it's being, you know, impacted with climate fear propaganda on, you know, personal vehicles, way we transport ourselves, or, you know, way we get from point A to point B. Listen to a recent Eco News report on Slavco's outpost that are just really vilifying, you know, large automobiles, you know, the grow-dozers and such, not really taking into account all the people that rely on them to actually, you know, live out in remote areas of our county. Pushing the climate fear and vilifying vehicles doesn't really, you know, help people who rely on them. But also related to, you know, Newsom's push to ban the sale of new electric vehicles in California by, what is it, 2030 or so? Just, yeah, it takes a certain amount of choice away from people without, you know, a real infrastructure built for it yet. I mean, we have the supposed offshore winds, but those are kind of dicey, as we see with one Daily Mail headline, "Offshore Wind Projects Face Economic Storm. Cancellations Jeopardize Biden's Clean Energy Goals." So are they going to end up kind of like the, you know, our bullet train to nowhere? I mean, where's that? We're supposed to have this high-speed rail that connected all of California's big cities, you know, dumped like, I don't know, how many was it, millions or billions of dollars into it? Do they have, is it even connecting two cities yet? I don't think it's, I don't think it's doing anything. I think it was just a big bureaucratic mess. So is that what we're going to get with the, you know, hyping up the climate fear for the offshore winds while tearing down all our dams?
Thank you, commenter. Appreciate it. That two minutes goes quick, I know. Anybody else, please come forward. This is public comment on non-agenda items, and you've got two minutes. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Tori Pulizzi, and I'm a seaweed farmer. I'm co-owner of Sunken Seaweed LLC, where my farm currently, or where we farm culinary seaweeds at an upland tank-based facility and in a facility within Humboldt Bay on a farm. For the past five years, we've operated in San Diego with little opportunity to scale due to poor water quality and high cost of coastal space. At the start of 2023, my partner and I officially moved operations to the Samoa Peninsula in Humboldt County, where scalability is achievable. I don't think many people realize that Humboldt Bay is one of only two places with pre-permitted areas in the state of California that allows seaweed farming in open waters. Additionally, it's one of the healthiest bays where aquaculture can take place and is quickly becoming the epicenter of aquaculture in California, with thriving businesses like the oyster industry and more innovative businesses like Holdfast Aquaculture, Nordic Aqua Farms, Selkie Land and Sea, and Cal Poly Humboldt's Provide and See. Seaweed farming requires no arable land, no pesticides, herbicides, or fresh water. It's a carbon-negative crop that can be used for anything from food to biofuels. This is an emerging industry in the United States, and few regions have taken the opportunity to be a player in this market. But those who have, like New England and Alaska, have seen major economic benefits. And seaweed farming is now considered one of the fastest-growing fisheries
Thirty seconds.
in the Northeast U.S. I'm speaking here today to ask that the businesses who do aquaculture in Humboldt Bay are added as specific stakeholder group before an MOA is signed for the Crowley Wind Terminal project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next? Welcome.
Welcome. Sebastian Elright with Aqua Rodeo Farms, which is a shellfish farm in Humboldt Bay, and then also Humboldt Bay Provisions, which is a local oyster bar in Old Town Eureka. And then I also do Humboldt Bay Oyster Tours, which is a seasonal tour of Humboldt Bay for tourists and local folks alike. I just wanted to thank the Commission for getting a memorandum of agreement going with the Crowley Group that's going to help foster kind of what the world has recognized as the blue economy, which is something that really promotes sustainability, economic, and social elements that all are impacted by that overarching blue economy. When we think about sustainability, we want to look at renewable resources and effective management of those resources. And I think aquaculture is something that's very important in that overall scheme. As far as economical, there's new opportunities that are being fostered through this blue economy, and I think that aquaculture is a primary, a primary spot to go ahead and foster and bring that out as part of this blue economy move that's going on. And with that goes workforce training. So it would be very crucial for the Commission to recognize aquaculture as a stakeholder in those endeavors. As far as socially, it'll help boost and enhance the quality of life, hopefully through proper management and understanding of all the people involved here locally. And then, of course, hopefully it'll increase the social standing of folks that are historically disadvantaged.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and just a real quick item. We're actually holding some listening sessions with the aquaculture community and the tribes over the next few weeks before we finalize our MOA with Crowley. So I highly encourage you to participate in those meetings. That'd be a great place to give that input. Thank you, folks, for showing up. Next, please.
Hi there. My name is Garrett Collins. I manage Taylor Mariculture Nursery. We are subsidiary of Taylor Shellfish. We are a company that has grown out of Washington. We're fifth generation. We've been farming water since 1890. We have over 600 employees that we keep full-time, and we have over 1,200 acres of owned Thailand plus the leases that we also work out of Washington. My business, Taylor Mariculture, supplies shellfish seed, manila clams, and Pacific oysters, Kubomota oysters, to over 114 different farms along the West Coast, from Canada, down to Mexico, and also through Europe. To give you guys a kind of scale of the numbers we produce out of our facility, we've grown 307 million animals this year. That's a projected market value for the state of Washington to $28.4 million. The way we're able to do that is we have clean water here. I'm able to sell my shellfish across state lines, and I'm one of three companies in the U.S. that is allowed to do that. Because we have disease-free certification, our customers all over the world want to buy our oysters because they know it's coming from a good source and it's not going to be impacted with any sort of disease out there. I'm talking to you guys today because I'm worried about this heavy lift terminal coming in and ruining the biosecurity of this bay. The boats coming in from Crowley, from San Diego
Thirty seconds.
do have a known herpes variant virus of the shellfish industry that has decimated farms all over the world, from Washington, France, New Zealand, everywhere. So this is something that is not really known to the public, but I'm trying to get you guys to know that there are diseases out there in the shellfish industry that we're very concerned about. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And next? Welcome.
Welcome. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Madam CAO, County Council. My name is Vernon Price. I believe on November 14th of this year, I come before you with a heavy heart and a humble heart in regards to requesting a situation that is near and dear to consumers' hearts of being able to have a voice that is silenced on a regular basis. One of the five faces of oppression is cultural silence. This letter was written and sent certified mail, signed by someone with the Board of Supervisors, on the 15th of this month. Every supervisor was given this morning a copy of this letter. The CAO's office and County Council has a copy of this letter. I beseech this Board to not let this go underdressed or underneath the table. Thank you so much for your time, your concern, and your consideration in this matter. And please have the best day possible.
Thank you. Next?
How's it going, Board? Gordon Clatworthy, running for First District Supervisor. I'm going to bring up housing again. I know housing is, we're in the middle of a crisis right now. Students are facing expulsion from living in their vehicles in, at Cal Poly Humboldt. I think what we could do countywide is work toward maybe removing some of the barriers to camping around the county. We're going to have people that are out on the streets, that are living in their vans, and they're going to get fined for camping violations left and right pretty soon. And, you know, we can do something to solve that before it becomes a crisis. I think any little bit that we can do to help with the housing shortage is important. So that's what I want to bring up.
Thank you very much. And next? Welcome.
Morning, y'all. That's from my Louisiana days. Here I am again. Couple days ago, going through, oh, I'm not sure if I'm on the agenda items or not on the agenda items, but you know, here in Humboldt County, it all kind of blurs together into one gigantic mess. Love the phrase "blue economy." I'm very blue about the economy. We fight the same fights over and over and over and over. I used to enjoy it. You know, I used to got my fight and spirit up. Where I'm supposed to be this morning is dispensing hot coffee down at the aha showers. But I got a pass on that to come here and kick that three-letter word because they know I will. Bye.
Thank you very much. Anybody else with comments on non-agenda items? This is your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on with our agenda. And we do have a couple of time sets that'll happen this afternoon. One of them on the general fund allocation for the Southern Humboldt Business Improvement District, and then there is also the Cannabis Initiative item at 3:00. So we'll hear those this afternoon. And so our next item on the agenda is an update on supplemental transactions and use tax for the November 2024 ballot. And I put this on here simply to kind of reaffirm for us as a Board the actions we took about three weeks ago here and to just give the Board a chance to kind of review very briefly. I don't see this as an item that we need to take a lot of time on, but of course, I want to make sure that the Board is in agreement with these items and we're all moving forward together. And that is to reaffirm staff direction, to put an ordinance together on this item, which is basically some funding for our roads in particular and possibly for transit. Also to affirm direction to staff to do outreach work with cities, transit, and other community proponents to finalize the elements of this ordinance in relationship to several board decision points that are going to need to be made over the next few months. One of them is the evaluation of whether or not it should be a special tax or a general obligation tax. Another one is whether to include transit and at what level of funding, or to have as a separate ballot measure. And another item is whether to include city roads and at what level of funding. And additionally, we're going to be doing some more polling, which we did over this last summer, early fall. And we're going to do some more polling, hopefully soon after the March ballot or March primary happens. And so it'll probably be in April or so. And to develop a robust outreach and education program for the voters and municipalities to generate support for this ballot measure. So really, it's just kind of reaffirming that. So I wanted to give the Board a chance to ask any questions or clarifying comments in regards to that item. Are there any from any Board members? Supervisor Wilson?
In your conversations, because this didn't really come up in our last bit, but in their conversations with the committee, the, we had talked about strategies around the reduction of road miles and actually, you know, asphalt within the county. And I was just kind of wondering, is that, would that be part of this, could, would that be part of the strategy in terms of this, or would that, is that included in this process or not?
Well, it's obviously not specifically mentioned, but I would assume that when we re-agendize this, we could put such item in there, so it could be discussed. I do remember you bringing that up.
Okay, and then, and then I'm making notes here. And with relationship to, and again, I hear you with, you know, my goal is to try and create something that has some, has broad support. And I don't think it necessarily has to, it just, it has to, I think it does have to touch on and have, you know, have at least some, some value towards transit and active transportation. And what I mean by active transportation, I mean those things that are not necessarily cars, but making sure that our other transit and infrastructure users are safe in that and want to, and, and want to make sure that that's part of what we're talking about. So those are the things that are of interest to me, and I think are of interest to my constituents, and so I just want to make sure that that's part of what we're talking about. And I know, I think the value of Measure Z has been the transparency by which we've been able to, and why we were able to kind of do a general tax around that was, is, is because we have that open process. Now, that process, I think we, you know, we know has some, we have conned down a bit of a, of a path that, where a lot of that has been allocated in a way that it makes it not as flexible anymore as much as we'd like. And we're going to, and we're working on a way to kind of get it back to what we, what we had intended. I want to make sure that there, for me, that there, that there's language in anything that we do that's really specific around what those processes are to make it so that we have that transparency and people know that when you pay a tax, it's being spent in the community and this is what it's getting spent on. I want people to understand what those values are and, you know, feel like they're getting good value for their investments. That's it.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. And that's exactly why this is on the agenda right now, to make sure we include all those thoughts from the Board that are, and the public in terms of how we're moving forward with this. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So I see a lot of your recommendations here. However, there is an ad hoc for this work, and I'm wondering if that ad hoc However, there is a ad hoc for this work, and I'm wondering if that ad hoc will meet again? What do you see the, how do you see this process? And I, I'm kind of a little bit confused because we did give direction at the last Board meeting when this subject came up. So I would like to ask our CAO, I guess, how this will roll out from this item.
CIO Hayes?
Yeah, I think, I think this, as the stuff item says, this is reaffirming the direction. So, you know, we, the reason why I was so animated, I would say, in pressing that we go for the November ballot is because we do still have a lot to learn around what the public's expectations and priorities would be in establishing this ballot measure. So we want to be very careful and precise in how we structure the ballot measure. We also still need to do some evaluation around whether it's a general tax or a two-thirds tax, and that will really drive how we structure the ballot measure. So we will, at the, at the beginning of the new calendar year, begin that research process and, and do robust community engagement with the cities, with all of the district communities, with all of our partners in transit, parks, wrecks, county departments. So there, it's going to be a robust process. And, and to the question of the ad hoc, I, I do see that the ad hoc would play a continued part in that, in that outreach effort.
Thank you. So do you anticipate that the ad hoc would come back together and discuss these A through E, and 1 and 2, and then come back to this Board for direction? Or is this the direction that you see from Supervisor Madrona's list here? I, I'm just curious, because the ad hoc comes back to advise this Board, and Supervisor Madrona and myself are on this ad hoc. I didn't know this item was coming. So I'm just curious what direction and how the Board can anticipate that ad hoc working.
I think we're, we're probably still going to have a few more conversations as a full Board, as we continue to gather information as to how we structure this. You know, as I said, there's still a lot of information to gather to articulate how we want to specifically frame this ballot measure as we approach the deadline of next summer to place this on the ballot for November. So there still will be decision points of exactly what that ballot language entails, whether it's, again, a two-thirds or a general tax. So I think there will be, we'll do additional polling and return to your Board with those polling results, which will inform those decisions on how to frame that ballot language and whether or not to do a two-thirds or a general tax. So I think that this is direction on how to do that research, and then we will return as the full Board to gain additional decision points from you.
Okay.
And the, and the ad hoc will help to frame those conversations.
Okay. And so the Board gave direction at the last meeting, so you're going to incorporate, because there's additional things here that weren't given direction at the last meeting, so you would anticipate incorporating all of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Great questions. Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I appreciate this coming back as two items. I do think, you know, this is similar too, but a little bit more nuanced than the direction we gave last time. But I think, to be frank, at our last meeting, the items for the ballot being put together and being kind of towards the end of the day, when we were all really tired and somewhat frustrated, I think just led to us not having the best opportunity to, to parse these issues. So I appreciate this. I'm in, you know, I'm in support of this item essentially, it's like reaffirming, but adding a little bit more information about what kind of topics we need to cover in the outreach, and that is absolutely what I've heard from my constituents. And, you know, the community members who have reached out to me from, from other districts as well around this has really been focused on answering some of these questions. So my, you know, I, I hear what you're saying about the ad hoc, and, you know, I, I don't know if it would step on staff's toes for the ad hoc to be actually involved in some of the outreach conversations, but I think it could be informative and helpful to bring back information to the Board. So I'll leave that up to you to kind of work through. But I think that could be really useful because these are, these are big questions, and we want to make sure that whatever we do moving forward will have the support we need both for it to pass and for it to meet community needs. So I, I like this, and I think it's headed in the right direction.
All right, great. And Supervisor Wilson?
I was just wondering, did the ad hoc have a specific, was it just for the polling, or was it all the way through to the?
To the whole measure.
To the, to, to the development of the measure itself?
Yeah, I believe the intention was for the development of the measure. The ad hoc road was specifically derived out of Supervisor Madrona's conversation around developing revenue options for, specifically for roads. Also, just a point of clarification, Council and I always like to be very sensitive when we have ballot measures going out, that we're not necessarily, as we go out into the community, we are educating the community, not necessarily driving support or opposition one way or the other, but letting the community know what the intention of the measure is and gaining feedback from the community on what their priorities are. So we want to be careful about that word "support."
Great clarification. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other Board member comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take public comment, and I do see there's one hand up in Zoom, and that is 5603. This is your opportunity for two minutes for comment. Welcome.
Good morning, Supervisors. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I just want to reiterate that the environmental community will oppose a transportation tax measure that does not include significant dedicated funding for public transit and other transportation decarbonization work. And a transit, a transit tax really can't be separated out from a road tax because voters are frankly unlikely to approve two tax measures in a row, no matter what they're for. Transit funding should be guaranteed because history shows that general guidance on spending just doesn't tend to hold up over time, and it's really not acceptable to provide, you know, a pittance for transit while providing the overwhelming majority for vehicular infrastructure. I do want to be clear that we are not denying the huge road maintenance deficit, but even a half-cent sales tax that's dedicated exclusively to roads would not come close to filling that deficit because we've inherited a huge road network built with low regard for long-term maintenance costs, and almost all of those road miles outside of our cities cost more to maintain than they generate in tax revenue. So there's a big structural deficit, and a new sales tax would unfortunately do a little more than moderately slow the growth of the deficit. On the other hand, the same tax revenue could transform public transit service in our region. For example, the same revenue that might allow the utilization of a few miles of roads in challenging terrain could potentially provide frequent all-day bus service on many of our most well-used routes.
30 seconds.
And these kinds of transit improvements, thank you, they're critical to, to address the existential climate crisis, also to address equity because those sales taxes are aggressive, and lower-income people are less likely to have reliable access to a vehicle. So investing in transit helps everybody, including folks with disabilities, kids, seniors, and low-income. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And we have 0116, star six done mute. Welcome.
I'd just like to say that the road should be fixed before the transit, it's not going to pay for all of either of them. I mean, it's another kind of cart and the horse situation there. If, you know, you put the money into the transit and there's, you know, no roads to run the transit on, then what's the point? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And we'll go now to those here in the audience today that might like to speak on this agenda item. This is your opportunity to come forward and share your thoughts with us. Seeing nobody else coming forward, we'll close public comment. I wasn't sure if Director Mattson wanted to make a comment. Are we good with what we're doing here, pretty much? Okay. Just wanted to make sure if you wanted to make comment, but anyway, appreciate the comments from the Board, and as identified in the agenda, we're really just reaffirming what we did before with some clarification on those issues. And there was at least four other items brought up to make sure that we're considering. We got some clarification that the ad hoc will absolutely still continue to be involved, working with staff and the community to try and hone in on what is supportable by the community to take care of these, these items that are so important. And that was, the additional items that were mentioned were reduction of road miles, consideration of active transportation in regards to safety and community transparency, i.e. some sort of a roads measure committee like Measure Z, and then also that the ad hoc would continue to meet and provide input. So with that, is there anybody who would like to make a motion? Seeing no more discussions, Supervisor Bone, please?
Yeah, I, I don't get as many calls about transit, I get calls about roads. And I served on HDA for 10 years, and I didn't know that they were running at a deficit because they were, I mean, I think we're providing door-to-door service on Old Arcata Road, or were. And we, and they're doing a great job getting to Southern Humboldt, running some extra routes to the north. So I haven't, I haven't heard a big, you know, I know we're going to, HDA at one time is going to give $6 to $10 million to the Earth Center over here. So it sounds like transit's got, and transit is a big number on the state, there's funding for transit. So I don't know if we do this, do a half-cent tax. I keep hearing that that won't fix all the roads, so we don't fix any? I mean, I think there's, there's an element there that that half-cent, talking to our Public Works Director, would go a long way if it was directly related to roads and bridges. And I keep hearing that the sales tax dollars, I mean, where's the lumber, where's the food going to come from, folks? We're not growing that downtown. So, I mean, and there's a lot of people living rurally, that protect our lands rurally also against fires and things like that. So I just, I, I tend to lean a little bit more, my district doesn't have a lot of transit, it's got some transit in it, but a lot of them don't have any transit, but I've got a lot of roads, and they're not very good roads. And I get, I don't think I've ever got a complaint, I got one from Ria Dale, about bus service. But if I get less than 10 complaints a week, I think something's wrong with my phone on the roads. So, I mean, that's a pretty simplistic way to look at it, but our roads, but the other thing is, is I spend quite a bit of time on our roads, and they're in pretty tough shape. So as we're looking forward, as we say road tax, I'm not sure when the transit tax comes in, it's going to have to be a lot more definitive for me, because if it swallows it up. So I just, we have a road issue. And I mean, I appreciate the CTTT guy saying that, you know, two ballot measures won't fall, but if they're popular ballot measures, they, they put ballot measures on every election, and every election they pass. So maybe we do a transit if there's a big problem, and we do roads if they're, if they're great issues, and I think that might be a way to look at it.
Thank you. And Supervisor Wilson, and then Arroyo?
I was just going to make a motion to move forward, and, and mention that you, you actually didn't specifically list transit when you went through your list, but I just assumed that you meant to.
I did, I did mention it.
Okay.
And it's on the list, a couple places. But thank you. And Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I'd just like to address the question or the comments around HDA, Humboldt Transit Authority. So yes, the HDA staff have been really phenomenal at seeking grant funding. The vast majority of the grant funds that HDA has been able to secure for one-time capital projects, so the $6 to $10 million that you mentioned, which I, I think you were on the Board when that came about, was, was for a capital improvement. So a transit, intermodal transit facility, and some of the other funding that HDA has been successful in receiving has been to buy new buses or to construct new facilities, like a hydrogen-fueling facility. So I just want to distinguish between operations funding and capital improvement funding, or funding for, for purchases of equipment. So the, the challenge that I think our public commenter was referring to, and which is, you know, I would say a mounting challenge, is to secure funds for operations, for, you know, people to do the maintenance and drive the buses and maintain the system, which is, in government, as we all know, a harder thing to fund, the, the staff time and the, you know, the, the kind of behind-the-scenes work that it takes to make the organization function. So with Humboldt Transit Authority, you know, in, in the last year, we've been more successful at recruiting drivers again. We've been improving slowly but surely, after the pandemic, the number of riders, and really seeing improvements there, seeing operational efficiencies, but are running up against a challenge when it comes to operations funding. So that's why I believe this is a conversation topic. It's very possible to continue securing funds for, for those capital improvements, and there's a lot of funding going towards those, but those are typically one-time funds. So that's, that's what we're experiencing right now.
Great. Thank you both for the clarifications. And any other comments? Supervisor Bushnell?
Well, I'll just second, so we can have a conversation.
Okay. Supervisor Wilson, back to the motion?
Yeah, just, the motion is for, to file and report, and I guess to, for staff to take these comments moving forward, so that's it.
Okay. So we have a motion by Supervisor Wilson, and a second by Supervisor Bushnell. Any further comments? Seeing none? Do we all have our voting tabs up now? Waiting for technology? Are you waiting for everybody voted? Yes? Click twice? Yeah?
Yes, they all came up. Motion carries 5-0.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Yeah, we got our work cut out for us there, but we will do it because we need to get it done. All right. Now we have a couple of presentations that we're going to have in regards to health and aging, and the first one is a presentation from Area 1 Agency on Aging on the First Community Assessment Survey for Older Adults in Humboldt County. You gotta press the button on the arm. There should be a light that comes on. There you go.
There you go. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair Madrona, for allowing us a little bit of time to come and share what we think is a really important study that was done recently. For the first time ever, the California Department of Aging undertook a statewide survey of, basically, it's called CASOA, which is a community assessment survey for older adults. And they surveyed over, well, they surveyed, they got over 17,000, almost 18,000 responses statewide. They had a two-part process. One was a random survey sent out to, random grouping sent out to people across the state, and then they opened it up for people who did not receive that survey if they wanted to, to comment. And I am happy to tell you that we got an exceptional response rate for Humboldt and Delnor County. Probably 5% of the total responses came from our two counties, and that was because we really pushed it as an opportunity for people in rural areas to let the state know, let people know what was going on in, in our communities. So I'm here today with Maren Rose, who is our planner, who is going to give you a little view of some of what was in the, the survey. There's a lot that we're not sharing with you today, it's huge. There, there's a lot of areas that we have a lot of good information, we're happy to share with groups and people who would like to know about transportation or housing or other elements, but she's just going to give you a little taste today. So go ahead, Maren.
All right. Great. Thank you. Good morning. So I have this presentation, I guess I just pressed this. There it is. So I wanted to start with telling you a little bit about the POLO, is the name of the organization that sponsors the CASOA, which stands for Community Assessment Survey of Older Adults. And they operated out of the National Research Center. And the CASOA, that's what I'm... And they operate it out of the National Research Center, and the CASOA, that's what I'm gonna call it, for simplicity, is, has been around for about 20 years, and it's used in several states. I know Colorado uses it, Vermont, and so forth. Many other area agencies on aging are using this survey, because it's been around for a while, it's a good survey, it gets good results. So it's, their goal is to bring the voice of stakeholders into civic engagement, and to have a voice in decision-making. That's their platform, and they do more than just CASOA. Their platform includes surveys for police departments, and all kinds of other areas related to civic engagement. So this just gives you a brief overview of the, we did both counties separately, and there was a random sampling design. So in the past, we've done a survey, a needs assessment for our area plan, and that's really kind of what was the genesis for doing this particular survey. Those prior needs assessments were basically convenient sampling, and they were focused only on needs. So we didn't really feel like we were getting representation necessarily, because it was a convenient sampling technique that often only included people that were already participating. So this design is statistically able to present better representation. And so we did, for Humboldt County, get a total of 613 surveys, POCO told us, wow, that's really good for your area. You can see what we did also for Delnor, it was the same method. There was two phases of the survey, the first part of it was the random sampling that occurred, they were, respondents were selected randomly, were mailed a postcard, and then the survey. And then a second phase was an open partition, participation phase for folks 55 and older for a month, and we did a publicity campaign, so we got 172 surveys as a result of that. They also waited the results to be more, to show greater representation. So the way the survey results are presented, and we also did give you a written report with all of the results, and even that written report is not complete. I mean, the full report is a PDF report that's 166 pages. So we kind of said, nah, let's, you know, abstract out of that. But it primarily looks at results in terms of what's called domains of livability, and then livability topics. So there are 17, on the right of the slide there, there's 17 topics. Overall community quality is actually a separate kind of overview, and not, even though they've listed it as a domain of livability, technically, they don't report it as a domain. So there's overall community quality, which our rating was pretty high, and they do a rating on community quality in each of the 17 topic areas. So as you can see, there's community design, and you can see the theme that that kind of encompasses, and the areas that it, there's specific data on. And so we have community design, we have employment and finances, we have equity and inclusivity, we have health and wellness, information and assistance, and productive activities. So I want to tell you that the top three, highest three score areas in community livability, two of them are in productive activities, civic and social engagement. And the other one is in mobility, interestingly enough, which is in the community design domain. Now, the questions, since we're talking about transportation, the questions on mobility didn't ask about roads, didn't ask for input on roads. There are some questions on land use, which is more about utility, infrastructure, and so forth. So you might be interested in looking particularly at that one, too. But it asks more, the mobility questions ask more about using my car, using public transportation, walking, bicycling, and so forth. So it's more about personal transportation use. The three lowest areas were, two of them are in the health and wellness domain, and one of them is mental health, and the other one is independent living. And independent living is actually refers more to nursing homes and assisted living, the kinds of living support, really. I think it's a little bit misnamed, frankly, because it sounds like it's more like aging in place, but when you look at the survey and the questions, they're more related to nursing homes, being in a hospital, more about institutional supports as you age. The other part that the survey provides, because it has been around for many years, and because there's a lot of data that has been collected, is it gives us an opportunity to look at how we compare with, with the national benchmarks. And the top two would be more favorable by comparison, and the bottom two would be less favorable. And there's 52 items on the survey that do provide us with a comparison, but the point we really want to make, and POCO has emphasized this as well, is this isn't intended, comparing us with national benchmarks is not intended to say we're good or bad, or they're good or bad. It's basically a way to give context for the information. If we were to use this survey for the future, in the next four years, we do another CASOA, and on and on, we would be able to get trend line data, which is more powerful, in a way, than comparing with the national benchmarks. The other point to make about the benchmarks is that they're, it's urban and rural combined. So keep that in mind, that's one of the reasons I included in the report, the detailed responses, so you could actually see, you know, what the percentages and the numbers were when you break out. It's not just summarized, you can actually look at numbers. So since I don't have time to go over all 17 topics, I picked two, one in the hot, one in the top three high, and one in the top three lowest. And I thought the supervisors would be particularly interested in civic engagement, because civic engagement looks at participating in political groups, attending meetings, participating in decision-making, and so as you can see, the livability score of that topic is 63. And that's the average of the community quality item. So they took the items on the survey related to civic engagement, and came up with an average, and then that's the score they gave it. So you can see also, social engagement and caregiving are in this domain of productive So it's, the report starts by telling you two aspects to the survey. First of all, the quality of community, which is the percent that reported excellent or good. So this shows you, and it also provides the comparison with the national benchmark. So this shows you that, for example, 70% of the respondents said that, thought the opportunities to volunteer were good, and were similar to the national benchmark. And participating in community matters, being connected and engaged. On this particular topic, they also had a few what's called status indicators, not every topic had status indicators, but this one did. So it tells us what percentage of people were, said they volunteer their time, and approximately how many numbers, hours of weeks, they do spend volunteering. So almost half of the respondents said they do some level of volunteering, on average, around two hours a week. And again, we're similar with the nation on that particular item. Here's another one, I thought you would be interested in, particularly voted, 84% of the respondents said they voted in the last election. So again, this gives you a breakout of other participation types of activities of the respondents, and then potential problems. So the survey gives you two viewpoints, one is the viewpoint of the, how well is the community doing, and the other piece is what problems or challenges are showing up in that particular topic. So feeling like your voice is heard, about 45% said that, they thought that was, that was a minor to major problem for them. Again, if you go look at the breakout on minor, moderate, and major, you can kind of see where the spread is. The other topic is housing, that was one of the lower, three lower areas, and probably no surprise, it'll be interesting to see what comes out of other states, other counties. I have a feeling it'll be similar. So what we got from there, a quality of community rating, you can see that we scored a bit lower than the national benchmark on variety, availability, and affordability of housing, similar, and this is a percent positive. And in terms of problems, we see that home maintenance and housework are issues for a high percentage of the respondents, not a surprise, we've seen that before. And then we're maintaining your yards, an ongoing challenge for respondents. So one of the things we want to do, and I think what's valuable about the survey is it looks at strengths, too, not just weaknesses, and we want to challenge the stereotype that older adults are a drain on resources, they make a lot of contributions. And so POCO provided us with an estimate of economic contributions of older adults, paid and unpaid, for 2023, and you can see by this slide, it's almost, not, it's under a million, but approaching it. Moving forward, so there's some-
Could you go back just one slide, real quick, please? There is some question about the number, yeah.
Oh, you're right, it's almost a billion.
Yeah.
I missed a few zeros, or three zeros, you're right, thank you.
So what's the number supposed to be, 463,000?
Correct.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
No?
460, I was, I read it wrong, 463 million.
Wow, that's huge.
So they did a formula using the census, yeah.
Wow.
So it's almost a billion.
Yeah.
So we really, it's important to not, to challenge that stereotype, you know? So POCO's recommending, and we would like to do more with these results, we think that there's some opportunities here to talk to stakeholders in different topic areas. They suggest we select one or two, and just start making some plans on how we can improve, where do we need to intervene? And also, of course, we will be using a lot of this information in our next, in the four-year plan, our area plan that we are writing this year for the next 24, 28 cycle. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Oh, I just find the information really enlightening, you know, it's so good, like you said, to break some of those stereotypes, and truly show not only how, how much our seniors contribute, but anybody that wonders about election results and turnout, well, the seniors are carrying their load, that's for darn sure. And I suspect it's because they grew up in a time where they really recognize that it is a privilege, it's not just something that we just get. It's a privilege, and if we don't use it, then, well, we end up with what we end up with. But applauses to the seniors for their high level of engagement. So yeah, Supervisor Arroyo.
Something I found interesting was on a couple of categories, and thank you, this is fascinating, and I would actually, I would actually like to see the full, full version, if you're able to share that.
Love to.
I love data, so I would enjoy digging through that and just learning from it. But I found in a couple of areas, something that was really interesting to me, and this is not totally surprising, but I'm curious how you, how you address this particular perception thing that's happening, where, like, for example, with mental health, a high percentage of folks felt that their mental health and emotional well-being was quite positive, but their perception of availability of affordable, quality mental health care was very, very low. And it seemed that that was the case on other health-related matters, as well as some other areas of the report, housing, too, where, you know, it seemed like more folks were housed or felt they had adequate housing, but their perception of availability was incredibly low. I don't think that that's a huge surprise to me, but how do you kind of work with that, and how do you suggest kind of working within that context, and doing this outreach, and engaging with the community around these results?
Well, one of the things about the survey is this idea that there's two lenses. And so it's kind of interesting that, that point about mental health, where, yes, it's, that's the lowest, it was a rating of five on the quality of community, and yet when you looked at how they rated their own well-being and mental health, it was quite high. And so the idea is that one is, I guess, from a personal point of view, okay, I'm doing okay, but when I look at what I think's available in the community, I don't think there's enough there. So maybe it comes from experience of family members or others, I'm not, who would know? It would be interesting to take some of these areas and do focus groups with older adults, or to do a further breakdown of a poll, which we could, or a survey through POCO. I don't know, Maggie, if you have anything to contribute?
Sure. Well, I took the survey, and I rated my housing as great, and my mental health as, as good as it can be. But I also know through my work that I am a fortunate person in a lot of ways. I talk to people who, you know, can't find a therapist, or, you know, so that's where it comes from. You have your own experience, but you also have the experience of your community and people you know. So that might be, you know, might be the break. I mean, I think we all can put ourselves in that A situation, realize that we know people who aren't, and that's how they were being asked.
That's really interesting, because it almost is, through and through, it's like a reflection of empathy or concern for the welfare of others that's coming through really clearly here. And so that, that just seems like an untold story of this report, is that people are, and that they're getting that information from somewhere, and, and there might be, there might actually be resources to fill that gap, but maybe they don't know what they are, too. So it makes me wonder if there's some need to just do better information sharing with older adults in the community around some of these resources, although I will admit we have significant challenges with housing, mental health, and, and physical health care services.
And I think that's true, and I think one of the challenges we face, and most service providers face, no matter what the service is, is that people don't pay attention to what's out there until they need it. And by then, they don't know what they, what's out there, because they weren't paying attention. And it's, so it's very hard to, what I call, right time information, you know, you could do outreach and media forever, and, and there's always gonna be somebody who didn't pay attention to it, because it wasn't relevant to them. And that, I think, is a challenge that all of us face, regardless of what we're doing.
Yeah, and just one more, if I may. I'm curious if, I didn't see it in the results, but if there were any questions that weren't in here, but that were asked about how best to get information? Like, is there, was there, were there any questions asked about how people receive information effectively?
Yeah, there's a section in, on information and assistance. Now, they had a series of questions about using the internet, and frequency, do you shop, do you, you know, what, do you use it, and how do you use it, or do you have it? So it was looking more at internet access, and not so much at other types of media, you know? But that, that section on information and assistance, those ratings were kind of low, too, which is within our bailiwick, which is our ongoing challenge, like Maggie says, until somebody's in a crisis, they, they won't necessarily recognize that they need to know something in advance.
Yeah.
You know, so it's always, it's always been, for as long as I've worked at the agency, that's always been an ongoing challenge. People don't know what's out there, because it's what you pay attention to, and if you don't need it, and they're, because we're all kind of inundated with information.
Right.
We all know we should have a go-bag, and, you know, we should be ready for emergencies, and we see the, you know, the information on television, and how many of us have all that ready to go? So it's, we know better, but we don't always do better.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciated the section on technology, I thought it was interesting, just be cool to know a little bit more about how people receive information, and, you know, older adults in the community, so that I don't make assumptions about how best to provide information.
Well, another area to just mention, in our county, we met with the Uroch Tribe, a couple of members of the tribe to do a key informant interview, and there are many members living way out, and in the whole county remotely, that have no access to information on any level. And one of the issues that came up was it was during the wildfires and the disasters. And the idea was people needed radio, two-way radios, that would be a better method than an internet, or, you know, because radio's more accessible. So anyway, I just, we, our county is really challenged, I think, particularly with internet access and information access as well. Yeah.
Great conversations, I think we all look forward to the detailed report as well, the PDF as a, you know, attachment or whatever you can do, so that folks can delve in where they would like to. But thank you so much for this information. And at this point, any other questions from the board? Supervisor Bushnell?
I would just like to say thank you for the presentation, and also comment-
I would just like to say thank you for the presentation, and also comment, you know, it's interesting when my constituents call me and the older population, they always start, a lot of times start with, "I'm fine, but I'm concerned." And they seem more adaptable to just their circumstances and living regardless, but they are, the concern is high for people around them or their surroundings. And also, I recognize the challenge with technology, and especially internet being not available in the rural areas, or too complicated. And so they don't wish to, it's frustrating for people that don't know how to use the internet. And so I do, like, the radio, when you said that, K-Mud in Southern Humboldt, is, I hear so many comments about, that's where they get their information. And so I do really appreciate the report and look forward to the full report also. Thank you.
Great. Oh, we're going to take public comment, so you can stay there if you'd like. Yeah, you never know, we might want to get a clarification from you. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll start with Zoom. We do have one hand up, and that is zero one one six. Star six to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. One important thing that I've heard tossed around a lot with indigenous peoples is the concern for, I mean, you know, what is left to, you know, the future, you know, seven generations ahead. And also, there's a lot of talk about, you know, resolving the impact of colonization. And I believe, like, the current threat to what lies seven generations ahead can be seen at the global level, like the true colonizers, like the Klaus Schwabs and the Bill Gates of the world, and that, you know, building this dystopian future that's going to be a nightmare for, you know, indigenous people and, you know, everyone alike. And just, just imagine, what are children going to be left with, seven generations into the new normal? That's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other hands up in Zoom, we'll go to those here in the audience today. Please step forward if you'd like to comment on this particular agenda item. Seeing no, well, we have one coming forward. Welcome.
Thank you. Gordon Clowder, running for First District Supervisor. I really loved the presentation. I thought it was wonderful. The lack of internet, lack of resources in the county is a big issue, especially in the more rural areas where we don't have the same infrastructure. And I know several places, especially down south in the Matole Valley area, nine-one-one operations have gone down, and that happened again recently throughout the county with AT&amp;T. So, yeah, we need to invest in our infrastructure, and we need to get education out there for people to get more information available to them, especially in the older population. We have to teach them how to, we have to make it easy for them to access this information.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the presentation, and also just want to say thank you for all you guys, too.
I'll second the motion and speak to it, which is, yeah, that was a great report. We kind of went down a few, just sort of tendrils of the, you know, of it. But there's so much more in there, and I recommend people to go on your website, and it's also in the staff report here, to take a look at it. It's really full of wonderful information. And very, as Supervisor Arroyo mentioned, it's informative for us to see all of that information. It just informs us for decisions across the board, so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell, and a second by Supervisor Wilson. Any further comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and do our voting tabs, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Five zero. All right. Great. Okay, and now we have another health presentation, and this one is by Public Health, I believe. I see Sophia is here and others, and it is a presentation on Live Well Humboldt County Health Dashboard. All right, we got the whole team. Fantastic.
Good morning. Sophia Pereira, Public Health Director. Have here with me our Deputy Branch Director, Laura Weiss, and Ashley Gephardt, our Program Coordinator, who oversees our Community Health Assessment, Community Health Improvement Plan, and our Live Well Humboldt work. We do have a presentation for you today, and I just have to say, I feel really grateful that we get to go after Area One Agency on Aging. There was some good synergy there, because we are here to talk about launching today the Humboldt County Health Data Dashboard. This is a really exciting venture, and this is at livewellhumboldt.org. Public Health has been the backbone organization for this work, as you know, but the intention is really for Live Well Humboldt and projects like the dashboard to be bigger than Public Health alone. And today, we are presenting this dashboard on behalf of Live Well Humboldt. So I'm just going to share a little bit of background on Live Well Humboldt. I know your board is familiar, but just for the community's benefit, Ashley will then pull up the dashboard and do a quick demo for you all, and then Laura will talk a bit about where we're headed with Live Well Humboldt and plans for continuous improvement of the dashboard. So just a little bit of background on who Live Well Humboldt is. This is a collective impact group working together to improve health equity, so that everyone in Humboldt County has a fair chance to be as healthy as possible. The collaborative launched in 2021 as a data work group to determine what data would be shared in the 2022 Community Health Improvement Plan and on the dashboard. The goal was to build an online tool that would share community health data more broadly with partners and community members, and help tell the unique story of health in our community. In September, we also kicked off the Live Well Humboldt Design Team. This is a group of about thirteen community partners who will be meeting over this next year to help design an enduring leadership structure for Live Well Humboldt. And this group will also be making decisions on how to move ahead with data gathering and reflection and storytelling work as well. We also just wanted to share you a little bit of the project timeline. Your board approves contracts and RFPs, and may not always get to get the update of like, hey, this is where all that work was leading to. So this show, this timeline shows some of those milestones along the way to develop the Live Well Humboldt Community Health Dashboard. So in February, we presented to your board the 2022-2027 Community Health Improvement Plan, which was launched. And at that point, we did announce that a data dashboard was underway. We contracted with Conduent in March, and Conduent is a company that works with local health jurisdictions and communities across the country to help build and maintain these types of community health dashboards. And so just, it has gone live today, livewellhumboldt.org, and really, this is going to be a living tool, and it's going to be updated over time with the input of Live Well Humboldt partners and community members. And so I'm going to turn it over to Ashley, who's going to share a bit more about how the dashboard will support community health improvement efforts.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Director Pereira, and thank you again to the board for having us today to share in the launch of this website. We're very excited to be here. So I will provide a little overview of what folks will be able to find when they visit livewellhumboldt.org. So the purpose of the dashboard, I just want to mention real quickly, is kind of, there are multiple goals here. So a couple are to centralize, and what we are saying is democratize the data, the community health data. So what we mean by that is that wanting to make sure that everyone has access to the information that really tells the story about health and well-being in Humboldt County. And so the goal with this dashboard was really to create a one-stop digital hub for the most up-to-date community health data to support people across the community, whether those are program planners, or students, or policymakers, to understand both the great benefits of living in Humboldt County, and also to highlight some opportunities for improvement, and really to support our community to take data-driven action and to evaluate progress over time. So on this dashboard, you will find a lot of data. So Supervisor Arroyo said, "I love data." That was a great segue. There is a ton of data on this dashboard. So there are our data visualizations for our data as well, and I'll pull up some slides in a moment to show what that looks like. Similar to what Area One Agency on Aging was sharing with their needs assessment, we also have some benchmark data on this dashboard, so we're able to compare how we are doing in Humboldt County compared to other counties across the state and the state overall, as well as the US overall. Folks can create customized reports and dashboards, track progress being made on the Community Health Improvement Plan, connect with local coalitions and groups doing all of this amazing work across the county. We'll have a place to house various reports and assessments and plans. And then there are also a couple of databases, one for best practices that people, people can search, as well as one with funding opportunities. And so, I'll go to the next slide. Okay. In order to save some time today, instead of going into the site live, I just have some screenshots here, but everyone can access the site live as of today. So I just want to share also that there is data on the dashboard way beyond the CHIP priority areas, right? So this is kind of like having a live community health assessment online. So as Director Pereira mentioned, we're working with Conduent, which is wonderful, because one of the things that they do for us is they manage a lot of the data. So they pull data from reputable sources that we're looking at anyways. So places like California Department of Public Health, the CDC, county health rankings, and they make sure that any time one of these big data sources publishes a new dataset, they're going to push that new data to this site. So the hope there is that we're able to keep data really current, and that builds capacity for our public health epidemiology team, as well as making sure that everyone that's using the site has really current, up-to-date data. There's no lag time. So we also can add our own data to this site. So if there's data that Conduent is not providing, we can say, hey, this is a data indicator that's important to our community. Maybe it's data that's coming out of a local health assessment that we think should also be on the site. We can add that, we can add that as well. So, let's see. That, I'm sorry, everyone, this is the homepage. So when you go to livewellhumboldt.org, this is what will pop up first. You can see across the top, there's this navigation bar that kind of lets you know what you'll find there. Each one of those has a drop-down menu, and you can scroll down on the homepage as well, which for sake of saving time today, we won't do with this screenshot, but there is information about the CHIP priority areas, which are connected to substance use, suicide prevention, healthy beginnings and adverse childhood experiences, and housing insecurity and homelessness. So lower on this page, you get a kind of a quick spotlight of some of that data, and link you to a landing page for each of those priority areas, where you can dive deeper into data and the work that's being done in the community. So I want to just give a quick example of what it looks like if you search data, and I apologize that the slide is a little cut off, and it is an eye chart. It's tiny. So if I were to search diabetes in the search engine on this site, I would see a list of different health indicators connected to diabetes. One of them would be adults with diabetes in our county. So let's pretend I clicked on that, and this is the, this is kind of the zoomed-out version of what, of what I would see. And I want to share, just to ground everyone, before I move deeper into the data, I always like to share that this data on the dashboard represents real people in our community, in our small community, people that we know, that we love, people that we may have lost. And so I think that there is a really, a big, but also honorable duty when sharing data about people in our community, to do that with compassion, with an equity focus, and with the intent to do no harm with this data. And as of right now, the site is live today, all of the data on the site is quantitative, so numerical data, right? But as Director Pereira mentioned, one of the focuses moving forward with Live Well Humboldt Partners, community partners, is to figure out how we add qualitative data to this, to this dashboard. How do we include community voice? How do we include some story? The story behind the numbers, I often say. So we look at this data, and we see, we see the numbers, but what's really happening in our community? So, moving on, I just wanted to share kind of zooming in to that image I just showed. We have, the title of each health indicator will show up. We'll have a quick explanation of what does this, what does this data mean? So in this case, this indicator shows the percentage of adults who have ever been diagnosed with diabetes. This is excluding women who might have been diagnosed with gestational diabetes while pregnant. There's a little blurb, if you will, about why this data, this indicator is important. And I know I'm moving quickly through this for presentation's sake. But below all of that explanation, again, this is really tiny, I apologize, but you see the actual, the actual numerical data. So you get a quick view, so for example, here you can see our rate is 9.2%. This data, you can't see because it's tiny, the measurement period for that 9.2% is 2020 to 2021. So these are folks who have been diagnosed, adults with diabetes, in that timeframe, 9.2%. Then moving to the right, you kind of get, you get a few icons for each of these health indicators. And so it's a quick look for folks to see, kind of red, yellow, green, how are we doing compared to other counties in California? In this instance, and if you were to hover over those icons, you would get a little pop-out that helps explain what that color coding means. So in this instance, what we're seeing is that we are in Humboldt County in the top 50% of California counties. We're in the greens, so in a good way, in terms of folks who are, adults who are reporting having had a diabetes diagnosis. You can see the green arrow pointing down. We are below the California, California value of 10.9. We're below the US value, and, and the blue equal sign is indicating that the trend over time, there's no statistical change. So there's no statistical significant change. When you look at that, the blue line, it looks like, but it went up and then it went down. But really, if we look at the values there, we're talking about units of 1%. So I want to share also that you'll see on the left-hand side, there's a box that's checked next to age. So for this particular data source, which is the California Health Interview Survey, we have breakout data for age, gender, and race ethnicity. So all I could include on this slide right now is the breakout for age. So we can see that for people in our county 65 years and older, these, this group of people has a higher rate of diabetes diagnosis compared to people 25 to 44, and so on. And in the bottom, in that gray bar, we see the comparison to the county overall, right? So these type of breakouts help us see who in our county is experiencing more burden, right, of whatever illness or health outcome we are looking at. So I think that this is a really important feature here, because this helps us dive into equity, right? So where are we seeing equity, inequities in our community, so that we can, we can look at those and address them? It's also another place to point out why it's really important to add that qualitative and that storytelling component, because we really want to make sure that we are leaving very little room for error when people look at this site, in terms of understanding what the data says, right? So that certain groups of folks are not being blamed, if you will, for the health outcomes, but we're digging deeper to say, why is this looking like this in our community for this group of people? So if I were to scroll even further to the bottom of that, that page, there are other related content. So there's an algorithm that the website uses to say, hey, if this person was interested in adults with diabetes, they might also be interested in these other indicators on the far left, right? They may also be interested, and these are all hyperlinked on the site, they might also be interested in these promising practices in the middle. So maybe I am working with a program, and I'm saying, hey, we have some funding to do some work for diabetes. What's happening right now across the US in terms of promising practices? What work are other people doing that's proving effective in this area? There might be other reports we could link to, and then in the orange star there, there are no funding opportunities listed right now related to diabetes, but if I had searched some other topics, I would also get a hyperlinked list of some funding opportunities. So I might see what grants are available connected to this topic. And so I- And so I want to add here also that Conduent, the company we're working with, they manage the promising practices and the funding opportunities, which is really helpful. So they have someone who is keeping their eye open, right? So across the nation, what funding opportunities are current right now, they're pulling them down when the grant period has closed, things like that. But we also can add to these lists. So if there is a local promising practice that's really unique to our community, we can add that here. If there are local funding sources, maybe Humboldt Area Foundation is doing their mini-grants or something like that, if it's okay with groups that we add that information, we would work together to put that up here as well, so that people would be able to see. And it would be keyword-linked, right? So if I'm interested in doing work with youth with asthma, if there is a funding opportunity specific to that, I would see that. I might see that show up here.
Clarifying question. Hey, Ashley, how are you doing?
Hi, I'm well.
Good. Is this definitive on diabetes one or two? Since there are two distinct differences, do they break out into one and two? And different, because I mean, one program won't work for the other and the other program won't work for the other. And I'm sure you have it on there, but I think there's people watching that are probably saying, there's more than one.
Yeah, thank you. That is a very good question, and I'm glad that you asked that, because it does not say here in the why is this important or the description. So we need to update that. So thank you for finding that. No, that's a really, that's a very good distinction, yes, because those are two different situations. So we will make sure to update that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Excellent.
So I'm almost to the end, oops, I'm going the wrong way here. The last thing I wanted to share here, that one of the other things, one of the other many features on this site is that we'll be able to track the progress around our Community Health Improvement Plan priority areas. So as I mentioned earlier, each priority area will have its own landing page that someone can visit. And so we're still constructing those right now. Those will be places where we'll want to add some qualitative data, places where we'll be sure to add some data visualizations. I mentioned earlier, whenever a data source offers us place-based data, so say we can break it out by zip code or census tract, we'll also include that here as well. So people will be able to see if they want to, sort of a heat map, if you will, that shows what's happening in different census tracts based on the health topic as well. But what we'll also include on these pages is a quick look at the Community Health Improvement Plan Strategy Maps. We're looking at right here, the Strategy Map for Suicide Prevention. So this is a quick look at what our community widely has agreed through the CHIP are our high-level goals and strategies around our collective suicide prevention work. And what we will do here, and this is just a quick snapshot, these are really, these are interactive. So you'll be able to scroll to the bottom of the page and see, each of these blue boxes represents one of those gray boxes in the strategy map. And so any place where there is work being done in what we would call a collective impact fashion, right? So maybe it's a coalition doing this work, or it's a number of community partners coming together, kind of joining forces to address this issue. You would see that show up in this dropdown. Again, it's a quick kind of red, yellow, green look. So here we can see that in terms of increasing the development and coordination of culturally responsive suicide prevention resources, our county's Suicide Prevention Network Youth Suicide Prevention Subcommittee is focused on that, and this is their specific objective. And I just want to say that right now, the Suicide Prevention Section is the most built out in this regard, because this network, this coalition, has organized their workgroups around the CHIP strategy maps. So the hope and the plan is, is that we'll continue to identify the places where all of this great collective impact work is happening, and we'll be able to kind of track it here and see over time what work is in progress, what is completed, and what is upcoming to address these big issues in our community. So I will stop there and pass the mic for next steps and a lot of gratitude to share.
So in closing, as you can probably tell, we are very pleased and excited to share this tool with you and with the community. We see this as the beginning of this project, and we will continue to look for ways to improve our understanding of health disparities, their root causes, and how we can work together to more effectively move the dial on health outcomes in our community. We know, as Ashley said, that there is additional data to include on this site. We look forward to working with community partners to identify what is important to add and how best to display the information. We also know that we need more than just numbers to understand the problems we want to solve. We look forward to adding qualitative data. Examples might include stories or testimonials from people who experience the problems themselves and their ideas for solutions. We look forward to using the site to share success stories and celebrating our accomplishments. Building the site takes resources, and I want to thank you for your ongoing support for this work and seeing the value of this dashboard. I also want to thank the staff on our public health team for the work they've put into getting this project to this stage. Also, we're super grateful to the design team for their ongoing efforts to build the backbone collective for the Live Well Humboldt initiative. And finally, thanks to all of the individuals who are working on the Community Health Improvement Plan Priority Areas and other areas of community improvement to improve health equity in our community.
Thank you.
Great. So that concludes your presentation, which was an excellent presentation. Thank you so much. And just like the one before, lots more detail to dive down into. And yes, it was no coincidence that we put the two together. That was one of our newer agenda attempts, Steph. I want to thank Steph and department heads and others for working to try and creating an agenda where things flow a little more logically, and having these together made a lot of sense. So any questions, clarifications from the board at this point? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you for the presentation and information. Although I tried to like go look at the site, and it's not really easy to get onto it. So maybe, maybe it's just, I don't know, I couldn't find it, actually. So that's just kind of a little bit of information. But also, I'm curious, if you could give an example of, why would you go to the site to find information on diabetes or to get the data? Or is there specific information that you would be able to access there? And I do, you know, saw all of what you presented, but it looked like a lot of data, and I'm just wondering if there's like a specific reason you might go there if you're looking for something, if you could give an example?
That's a very good question. Thank you. So one of the real, I think, benefits of this site is that what we're doing is bringing data to one place on a lot of different topic areas, right? And so I know that from a public health perspective, when we're writing a report or doing program development or writing grants, you are often going to a bunch of different sites trying to say, okay, well, what does the CDC have on this topic? And what does county health rankings saying? And what does CDPH have on this topic? And so one of the reasons to go to this site would be that it kind of cools everything together in one place. So let's say you are writing a grant that's specific to work around diabetes or some other topic area, you'd be able to go search, just do a keyword search, and you're gonna get a list. And that's a piece that I didn't show, so I apologize for that. But it shows the whole list of indicators connected to that topic area, and you can go through and click on all of those. And one of the nice things also is it shows data trending over time. So all of the data on this dashboard is going to be trending over time, so we can see what have things looked like in our county over time, as well as then, like I was pointing out, kind of getting that comparison, so we can say, or the benchmark, so that we can say, well, how do we look compared to other places in the county? And also being linked to other resources, I think. So that's another thing, local resources. So we'd be able to see, is this an area that's a priority area in the Community Health Improvement Plan? And if so, who's already doing work on that? And how might I get connected? Things like that.
So I think that right there is great information, that the resources are available through this website, that if you are looking for those and how to connect with people in Humboldt County, that that would be a great use for that as well. And then the grant writing information that you just shared, that's very, that's amazing as well, being able to source that data in one site. And so I think those are really great examples, and thank you.
And Supervisor Bushnell, I just did want to confirm, we did have some folks double-check, and it looks like the website is working. So just wanted to make, just for the public to know that, so I'm sorry, it seems like you may have had a technical issue.
Oh, no, I'm one of those people.
Yeah, yeah, no, I had someone else double-check, and it looks like it's working for them.
And that, no, I sometimes, you know.
We just want to make sure it wasn't down. So thank you for that. Presenting it, and then, oh, but the website was down, so no, it looks like it's working.
Okay, thank you for that.
Supervisor Arroyo? I'm sorry, you didn't want to make a comment? Okay, please.
I just wanted to note, if anyone else had this issue, I tried to access it before today, and it was launched today, right? Okay, so this morning, I was excitedly reading it as I woke up, and saving some pages that I found really insightful when it comes to making broader decisions. You know, sometimes I think we don't have data like this when talking about, like, for example, one was access to parks. 59% of people in Humboldt County have access to parks as opposed to 82% in California, and there's a 20% difference between folks based on their race or ethnicity. So that, to me, is really important when it comes to making decisions about, you know, how we prioritize our resources. And then the data around income and poverty was honestly staggering to me. When you look at the census data, it doesn't allow you to parse it in this specific way, or if you do, you have to do quite a lot of your own analysis. You'd have to take the data out and really work with it in a different way. And this made it, for me, really, I mean, I think the most impactful thing was in my cursory look this morning, admittedly, was the per capita income. And when we talk about equity, I mean, the per capita income of self-identified white non-Hispanic people is double what it is for almost every other group, double. That's shocking to me, and not something that I genuinely had seen, you know, displayed in this way. So anyway, I just want to say, you know, where we're, this really confirms what we know and feel and hear about our community, but provides, you know, a quantitative framework to look at it. Another one was renters spending 30% or more of their household income on rent, 63% in Humboldt County compared to 54% statewide and 49% in the US. So anyway, as we're making these decisions, you know, I plan to use this as a toolset. It, maybe I'm just a real softie, but I would say some of this data almost like brought me to tears when I was looking at it, because it tells the story about who we're serving, who we're having difficulty serving, and how, you know, how we need to really grapple with the inequities in our community to be able to get to where we're saying we want to go with the Community Health Improvement. So thank you very much for all the work putting this together. It's been an honor to play a little bit of a role, helping in the conversations around Live Well Humboldt, and I look forward to continuing to do that. And, you know, I plan to use this a lot.
Great, thank you very much. Any other board members with comments, questions? Not yet, we haven't yet. All right, we'll go to public comment, and we do have one hand up in Zoom, and that is 0116, star six to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, Ash Teeter at LostCoastPopulace.com. I'd like to request that this new health platform be used to record and track the possible negative impacts of COVID vaccinations, specifically in relation to cancer and heart conditions. It is important that we do so on a local level to maintain data integrity. I put in records request where I was given the response that all of our data was shipped, you know, through the California and then through the CDC, so it wasn't really on a local level that you could access it. I've talked to someone who works in the local mortuary industry who confirmed reports seen nationally in an increase of unnatural blood clotting since the rollout of the vaccine. I understand there's a large amount of corporate pressure from Big Pharma to discourage even discussing such incidents as seen in the thousands of reports on VAERS. President Biden's FDA vaccine advisor recently refused to take the latest COVID shot and is raised alarm about potential deadly effects of the mRNA jabs. Dr. Paul Offit, the lead advisor of the US Food and Drug Administration, FDA, said the following: "We are going to find out about this vaccine over time," he warned. He continues by describing the whole approach of the mRNA shot as a novel strategy. "We certainly were surprised by myocarditis and pericarditis, and we'll see whether or not, over time, you know, where we're on five, 10 years. We'll find out over time. Given the possibility of harm, I also request that COVID vaccines stop being pushed by the local health department, especially on the youth." Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And that said in the Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today. Welcome.
Good morning, Supervisors. Mary Ann Hansen, First Five Humboldt, and I am so excited about the Live Well Humboldt dashboard for several reasons. First of all, the approach that public health has taken has been remarkably collaborative. And it's not an easy thing to wrangle the community to agree on how we can measure the success of our Community Health Improvement Plans, our plan. And so it's taken persistence and a collaborative spirit from them, and I'm deeply appreciative of that. I'm also super excited that Healthy Beginnings is part of the CHIP, and we'll be able to see in a transparent way how our community is making progress on those Healthy Beginnings and ACEs goals. I'm also excited on a personal level, because I get a lot of calls from community partners about where do they get data? Where did I get data? And so now I have a transparent, publicly approachable, accessible site to refer them to. Anybody, and then I'll sort of reference to Supervisor Bushnell's comment about why and Ashley's response about grants. Anybody that's worked with me knows that I feel like we can only solve these problems together, and I take a very collaborative approach to grant applications. It's too easy for our small community to complete. And I think that the transparency of this data will help us collaborate as a community to solve these really big and difficult issues. So I just want to thank Public Health for their work and your board for this support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else with comments on this agenda item? Please step forward, and we have one coming. No? Okay. With that, we'll bring it back to the board, and yes, please, thank you so much for all your hard work. It's just, it's a league forward, you know, really, to have this information organized in this way, accessible to folks. So thank you for that hard work. And bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
I'll make a motion to accept the presentation. I'll second.
All right, we have Supervisor Bushnell motioning, and Supervisor Arroyo seconding, and Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks. I just wanted to thank you guys for all this hard work. And I do believe that, you know, for sure, you know, data geeks are gonna really love this. And it is really a tool for, you know, our technocratic, you know, group of people here in Humboldt County, both within the county and all our supporting agencies, to like collaborate, figure out where these places are to work together, but also get good information. So our applications are as competitive as possible, and I think that's gonna, I mean, even if one really solid grant works out because of this, it's paid for itself. And so I'm just really happy that this is like a good investment of our time and energy. I did want, one thing, I did see on the diabetes information, but there was just two years of data. And so, you know, for me, that's not very trend-worthy. And I'm just sort of wondering, will there be more data mining going backwards, do you think, in terms of this? Not just the specific dataset, but with regards to other things? Are we just kind of, is this more of a we just kind of, is this more of a forward-moving body of work?
So just to make sure I understand the question, just because that, and that, when it sounded like there was only a couple of years of data that was reflected, just wondering for the other data sources, is it, is it going further back? Is that what your question is? Or if not, that we would be adding?
Yeah.
Would that be getting added in? I don't know the answer to that question, but I want to make sure I understood your question first, and I don't know if we have, we have that information.
I might be able to answer that. Thank you for the clarification, though, and that's a very good question. So for, and for, for a number of the indicators on the site, we have data going further, further back in time, so I understand the concern. For, for that, for that particular indicator, we are sourcing the data from a bigger data source, not, not our local data, so we are showing the data that they have, but we can, we can definitely, I mean, we can definitely work with, I think, well, we're working with what we've got, and moving forward, and for some of the health indicators, we have, we can reach out to Conduent, the company that we work with, and ask them if there's a way to, to pull data from, from previous years. So I think that, I guess, to sort of answer the question, most of the indicators have more than a couple of years of data. Moving forward, we'll be adding new data to that particular indicator as we go, based on that, that actual, the survey that we're pulling the data from, and the company that we work with, I do think we can reach out to. So we have, I want to mention, too, we have a spot on the, on the dashboard for people to provide feedback, so wonderful questions like that, to say, hey, I noticed there's only a couple of years of data, is there a way to get more information? So we will be really encouraging people to use that sort of survey tool, and let us know. So if you're searching for data, and you land on an indicator, and you think, wow, I'd really like more information on this, please do let us know, and we can dig a little bit, a little bit deeper, and see if we can get sort of retroactive data, and answer those, answer those questions better, but.
And you answered my follow-up question, which was, is there, is there, you know, a reliable interface for folks, so that if they have questions, that they can get those responses? Thank you.
I just, I wanted to add that we also rely on staff resources to produce data reports. We do have epidemiology, epidemiology program, and we have typically described data with a five-year rolling average. That's something that is a typical way, especially with small numbers, to show, to show trends and to incorporate data from small numbers. And we're trying to consolidate, as Ashley mentioned, you know, our reports that we produce on this website as well. You know, in general, we're working to move from PDFs, you know, the idea of having some old document that you referred to, to having a live, updated dashboard. But we also have our previous community health assessments, and some various morbidity and mortality reports pinned to this site as well.
Great, thank you very much for that, and at this point, we've got a motion and a second, so if we'll cast our votes.
Everybody's voted, and it carries five to zero.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Excellent. Yes. We're going to take a five-minute break, we'll be back here at eleven oh five. The next item on our agenda is item I two, consider making one appointment of an at-large member, and two appointments of alternate members to the Measure Z Citizens Advisory Committee, and we have Tracy D'Amico here to present.
Good morning, Board. So on October 12th, the Board of Supervisors was notified that there was an at-large vacancy and two alternate vacancies on the Measure Z Advisory Committee. At the time that we published the agenda, we had one attached application for a Talen Titus, and then we did receive a second application for Sue Long, which is on the dais and available to the public on the podium. I've included both of them in the Zoom invite, I think they are probably on Zoom. I wanted to let you know that the at-large appointment is for a four-year term, but it's going to be filling the remainder of the term, which would end in January 2025, so they would be active for the entire next year. And then the alternate positions are also to fill the remainder of the terms. The alternates do not vote, they attend the meetings, but they can vote in place of a member who is not present, or may term out, or may, you know, for some reason leave the commission. So with that, if you would like to speak to the two applicants on Zoom, and then you could deliberate.
Great, and, yes, Supervisor Wilson?
I'm not to go too sideways on this, but I just want to ask the question, I mean, we only have two applicants for what is essentially three seats. Could we extend this to try and get more applications? Could we, you know, postpone this decision? I'm asking this because, honestly, like, I've had a hard, it's like, for us to advertise through our social media and those sorts of things, it's like, we, sometimes we're better at it than other times, and sometimes we, you know, are able to get support, not necessarily from, from staff, but from other entities who are looking for folks, where, you know, they make little Instagram things that we can post, and we can get some response to, and those sorts of things. And in this case, I just feel like they're, on our, my end, at least, for me personally, I haven't really done the job that, of extending the invitation for Measure Z enough, I believe. And so I was just wondering if, is there a timeframe or a time limit? Are we up against something, or is this just the opening?
I appreciate that, and in the alternate recommendations, there is the recommendation that you could postpone the appointment if you choose to wait for further applications. However, I would like to say that with this particular appointment, we have done several blasts in the newsletter, in the updates, and it's been posted since October. I know I've personally reminded the board several times that we're looking for these applications. I've sent out other applications, and they just haven't shown any interest. As far as the timing, I think that CAO Deputy Sean Quincy did indicate that their first kind of get-it-together meeting is scheduled in December, with really the nuts and bolts of those meetings, and starting the applications and processes begins, I think he was saying in February? In February, that's correct. So there is some time, however, with two applications, you might be able to consider the, at-large is the voting member, that is really the primary concern that we have as far as vacancies. I'm not sure if postponing it's going to generate any more applications at this point, but that is the prerogative of the board, you can make that recommendation if you choose.
And I guess what you're also saying is, we could pick one and postpone the others, or whatever that might be, and one will have to postpone. I mean, there isn't an application for, we don't have enough applications to fill the seats that we're talking about today as it is. I just put out there, my preference is to postpone for a couple of weeks, and then, and then, and really do a more robust job of, of asking for applications, but I'm not, I'm not, you know, this, it's not make or break for me necessarily, if the board wants to do something else, or has preferences, I'm, I can be swayed on that, so thanks.
Supervisor Bone?
Historically, have we had to use the alternates very often, or at all?
No, I'm getting an indication that that's not the case, it's just a nice backup to have. It's really the at-large member, they are the voting person in this commission.
Well, and I know I've had, I've reached out to a few people and things like that, I don't think I've ever had anybody from the, you know, Lance George Ferndale, but I don't get a lot of Measure Z money in District One, so, I mean, I don't have an issue with either one, with Long or Titus becoming the member at-large, and, and then the alternate. I, so I, I think if we appointed those two, we could, you know, I mean, I guess, if we're going to be real more, more robust, but we've had, like, this came to us like eight weeks ago or something, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I understand where you're coming from, Mike. I, Mike, I haven't stood on a street corner banging a drum either, so, I mean, you know, I haven't been saying, I like getting here, we need you, so, I mean, as we move forward, I mean, I'll throw out.
You, you might want to discuss it with the applicants first.
I would like to have the applicants speak before we nominate anybody. I think that'd be appropriate. Thank you, Supervisor Bone, and thank you to the two applicants that did apply, frankly. Thank goodness that there is some interest. So we'll start out with Ms. Titus, your application was in first, so we'll just go ahead and start with you, and then we'll ask for Ms. Long after that. So, welcome, and share with us in a few minutes what your thoughts are.
Hi, thank you. My name's Talen Titus. I am the Director of Insurance Services, and based out of the Humboldt County Office of Education. So in my professional life, I oversee two insurance GPAs for school districts, and those span, the majority of them are Humboldt County, but we also serve Siskiyou, Delmore, and Lake Counties, and that consists of two separate GPAs, as I mentioned, and we provide medical, dental, and vision insurance through one, and then property liability and workers' compensation programs through the other. I am a born and raised resident of Humboldt County, I've moved away a couple of times, but come back. My family, on both myself and my husband's side of the family, are very well-rooted in Humboldt County, this is our home, and so I feel that Measure Z kind of ties into both my work and personal life, and I feel like I would be, would come onto the committee as a representative of all of the Humboldt County school districts, which those really vary by size and type and their needs all across the region, and so I kind of have the unique perspective of seeing the needs of Ork School District clear out to Castorland and Clameth Trinity, and everywhere, everywhere in between. Did anyone have any specific questions for me?
I just, I'm going to ask this of both of you, which position are you applying for? If, if that's even a thought?
I, I don't recall if that was on the actual application or not. I don't have any previous really direct history with working with Measure Z, aside from as it's kind of bled into school districts through, through funding, so I would be happy to serve as an alternate, if that is what we feel like would be best suited, and just be able to be a listening ear as I learn more about the committee, and I'd also be fine to serve as an at-large member.
Great, thank you for that, and yeah, that question wasn't on there, I just thought I'd ask.
It's not on the application, there isn't a box where they can check for at-large or alternate.
So really, you're applying for either or?
The at-large.
Yeah, great, thank you. All right, Ms. Titus, I'm sorry, Ms. Long, excuse me.
Good morning, good to be here and see all of you. I've interacted with all of you over the years in one capacity or another. I have a lot of public agency experience, and I would be able to hit the ground running for this measure. I would prefer the at-large rather than the alternate, if I'm going to give up that much time. I'm very dedicated to my community, as all of you already know, and my children, and all twelve of my grandchildren live in the area, so definitely invested in the area, as is Talen. I'm actually excited that a younger person is interested, and I think she would serve very well, I think she would be very loyal and committed, and I think that, because of my experience, if I were the at-large and she was the alternate, that would give her that learning ground, and then she would be able to step up the next round, and it would be really, really cool to see young people get more involved. I have twelve years on the Fortuna City Council, eight of them, I was the mayor, and I have served on lots and lots of committees and boards in local area and in Sacramento, which Sacramento sometimes is like beating your head against your back wall, but I still was able to, I think, make a difference for our little community here, and that's my main goal, is to serve the community and Humboldt County, and the city of Fortuna, basically because I live and work and play here, I am very, very involved in the community, even though I'm no longer on the city council, I'm still serving on boards, planning city events, and just want to continue to make this a great place to live. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board for either candidate? Okay, Supervisor Bone?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Sue Long as the main, and Talen Titus as the alternate, and really appreciate them doing both. I think this is, Ms. Titus would have done a great job in the main position, but this allows her to catch on, it is a one-year term, and as Sue said, so I think we can look forward, right? Is that, the main, the at-large, the at-large seat is a one-year term?
It's filling the remainder of the term for one year, and then the reappointment would be for an additional four-year term.
So, anyway, that's.
And, yes, and the reappointment would happen out in, in the future, at, at the end of the year, yeah. Okay, and we haven't taken public comment yet, but Supervisor Bushnell?
I will second that motion, however, I want to thank both applicant, applicants, and it, it is, I, you know, asked a lot of people throughout Humboldt County, and got one applicant, so I, you know, I don't know if Supervisor Wilson, have you, you seemed interested, but had you asked people, or just hadn't got them?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, a bit, I mean, I don't feel like I did enough on this, for sure, just, I'm putting it out there, so it's like, as Supervisor Bone said, I was not at the mountaintops, you know, putting out that the Measure Z commit, and I should do more, but I was just, I was just saying, it was hard to keep up with this one, and, and also, I will say, like, it, when, when we're asked to do this, and this is something we gotta, we have to work on with relationship to how we put out this, I know we put out things in newsletters, but our social media way that we put these out is not as the same as what I've seen in some other support, and I'm just saying, we may need to update how we do this, and it's not just for this Measure Z, it's for in general. We have a lot of committees, and they only seem to grow, we never seem to get rid of them, and, 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 or they never seem to sunset, and, and there is some meeting fatigue, and it seems like, you know, you kind of get the same people doing, it's like the doers that are the, and so our outreach seems to be lack, I think, you know, and I'm part of that, I'm not, I'm not putting that on everybody else, it's like, I feel like I, we all have to do more, so, that was my, that's, so what I'm saying is, I don't feel like it was done quite enough in general, that's just what I'm saying, but I'm, I'm okay with, but I'd like to hear what the public has to say about the proposal with relationship to the motion and.
If, if I could just, real quick, I, I do want to point out that we do bring the quarterly report, which shows what vacancies are coming up, and we try to do some outreach. I have been working a little closer, and it's one of our goals at the Clerk of the Board's office, to work with Kati at the CAO's office, she's been really key in helping me put out the, put out the information about the real critical boards and commissions that are making, you know, financial decisions, or have qualifications that, you know, where they have to take training, and we are trying to step that up so that we can get more recruitments. Just so the public knows, we keep all applications on file, anything that's current within a year-time period, I reach out when there's an opening and post the vacancies, so that they know they have, they can then use that same application, so there are some steps, of course, there can be improvement, and it is something that we're working on.
As a follow-up, I want to say that, the reason I even kind of bring this up, it's just a recent experience, which is, there was a recruitment for the Juvenile Justice Board, and, and Kelsey, the, the person who's really helped managing, the volunteer that's managing that, distributed, you know, a social media flyer that was very easy to just post, and, which was different than when I have done these myself, I'm just saying, and it got so much more response than when I was doing it myself, or just reposting from our newsletter. I mean, I'm not saying we haven't done stuff, and I'm not saying this is the place we adjudicate this, we shouldn't be doing this right now, I'm sorry, I apologize for that, but all I'm saying is that, is that, I would, I'm hoping that we can do, we, including myself, can do better on this, I'm really not, and I think we can, and I'm just saying, just having two applications for what are three fairly important positions tells me that we're, we need, we, we could, we can be doing better, and I'm, by we, I mean me, so, thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Bushnell, you want to finish your comments?
Yeah, thanks, Supervisor Wilson. So I, I did a lot of outreach, and so I really feel good with the recommendation of the motion. I feel that this, and to Tracy, thank you for all the reminders, and all of the quarterly bringing up who is, you know, vacant in those positions, and so I am seconding, and thanks to the applicants for applying, and I feel good with at least having two candidates, and to fill that main position, so.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you, I just like to express appreciation to the folks who have applied. I also.
I, I also reached out to folks and reposted. I saw, like, when it comes to social media, you know, I see that a lot of our content happens in Instagram or Facebook Stories, which are temporary, and so I, I do repost those, but I agree that it would be nice to receive those flyers by email that we can post on our channels, et cetera, and use for outreach. So, I, I think that's a good point. I would like to have the, like, official sources that I can more readily share on my channels. That said, I think, you know, this is a, kind of a, a tough committee to serve on. There's, the stakes are fairly high for making big decisions around this, and, you know, many of the folks that I asked if they were interested said that, you know, they just were having a hard time envisioning themselves in that role. So I appreciate that we have folks that are willing to step up and, and serve in this capacity, and I agree that we could always do a better job of outreach, but I think, you know, some of that is just the, the function of what the limitations of our existing social media channels are, so, at least online. And I know that, you know, if we do it by word of mouth, we're kind of reaching the people that we have always reached, and that is also valuable, but, but I, I agree that, you know, finding new ways to get people engaged would be great.
Supervisor Bone?
It is, it is a tough committee, and I've, I remember we formed it and have been pretty involved with it. It's hard to serve on any of these committees because they're, they're, they're time-consuming, they're during the day, you've got to throw your F-700s out there, then you're, then you're in suspect to everybody getting down to you. And, and there was one little clarification, they don't get to make decisions, they get to make suggestions.
Welcome.
And then we get here and sometime toss some of their decisions out the window because we, we think we have a better idea or be better for this and that. So that can be frustrating for them, I've heard that before too. That's the position we're in, that's what they do. So, it's, we're, we're very fortunate that we have two very qualified people that have stepped up. It's, none of these people are in stone, I'm sure there'll be some more turnover and we'll be able to implement, give these, give staff a time to implement. I guess you guys want flyers to put out or, or something to that, I'm not sure exactly what I'm hearing there, but, but if we can get staff to, staff does a pretty good job telling us when there's openings, and they're pretty much all listed on the sites if you go through them, and we, we get it quarterly also. So, I think we're pretty good with, with what we've got, and then maybe implement some of the ideas that Supervisor Wilson had in, in the future, or we can kick the proverbial can down the road, but...
Okay, so let's go to the public and hear from them, and so looking at Zoom, I do not have any hands up there. So we'll come to the audience here today. If anybody would like to come up and comment on this item, this is your opportunity.
I need to stand up.
There you go. Welcome.
I think the two people, hi, my name is Carol Saucier, and I think the two people that we listen to, they do a fine job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Your book, your book.
All right. With that, looks like that's the end of public comment, so we'll come back to the board. Supervisor Wilson?
Well, not hearing anyone from the board wanting to postpone this, I'm totally, like I said, I think it's, this is, this is fine. I want to say that I have served with Sue Long on several boards, a wonderful and committed board member on all those institutions, so I think she'll do a wonderful job.
All right, great. And there's our voting boxes that have now come up, so we'll go ahead and cast our votes for the motion.
Thank you, motion carries five zero.
Great, thank you very much, Tracy. Appreciate your efforts there, and thank you for the applicants. Look forward to your efforts on Measure Z. And so with that, we have several more agenda items. I, I very much want to try and at least get the next two in before we take our lunch break. The first one is the resolution, I'm sorry, yeah, resolution calling for a special election to submit to the voters of Humboldt County, a proposal for the establishment of an office of the Director of Finance and ordering that the special election be consolidated with the statewide election to be held on March 5th, 2024. The other item I want to get in before we take our lunch break is the successor memorandum of understanding with SEIU's, because I know folks have been waiting all morning. So we'll start out with the resolution for the special election, and I believe CAO Hayes has some comments or presentation to make.
Yeah, thank you Chair Madron. Before your board today is a follow-up on an item heard on November 7th, where your board directed staff to return with a resolution and any and all necessary documentation to place an item on the March ballot for the public to consider an office of the Director of Finance where the Treasurer-Tax Collector and the Auditor-Controller would be consolidated into one department with an appointed department head. Some context around the parameters of this position, the ordinance, should it be approved by the voters, would be established to dictate that the qualifications of that position would require a minimum threshold to either meet those qualifications of the auditor or the treasurer, not both, that that position would require a four-fifths vote of removal by your board, so it would establish a higher threshold than the normal three-fifths vote. And furthermore, that the current audit committee would be repurposed into a Citizens Advisory Committee to provide an outside third party that can provide some oversight and advisory to that office. Furthermore, I would like to note that the Treasurer-Tax Collector and the Auditor-Controller have both indicated opposition to this measure. Furthermore, your board is not in, is not unanimous in support around placing this on the ballot. Supervisor Madron did vote in opposition of this, which is a little non-typical when placing a ballot measure before the voters. So, you know, reduces the confidence level some around the success of, of such a measure. So, that is something for your board to consider as you provide final direction to move forward with this. Furthermore, should your board approve placing this on the ballot today in March, staff does have some final red line changes to the verbiage of the ballot measure, which I can share screen, it's just some minor changes that the Register of Voters requires to be compliant with election codes and just some manipulation of verbiage. So, following discussion of your board, if you approve that, then I can share that ballot language. Share it now. Council would like me to share it now.
Yes, and also, I mean, there's a very thorough report, but also we did have some feedback from our consultants in regards to this measure?
Yes, I, our, our consultants like your board to be lock and step in these sorts of things, and so, again, having one board member not supportive of this and, you know, making statements in the public of, of such, again, is, you know, not positive for the outcomes of such a measure.
Great, okay. And the red line versions, first of all Supervisor Bone, question?
Yeah, I don't, you know, there was a time that this was probably the greatest thing since buttered popcorn, that it might have worked. I mean, right now, we have succession, we have, we have people in place that have taken us from a situation that was, I had a, I had a vendor say he's thinking about coming back and doing business with us, because I don't know the amount of vendors we lost in the previous four years in times past, but it was numerical. And then there was also, we lost most of our discounts. It was trying times. It was, it was pretty bad, and, and we were fractured at that time too. But, I, I really don't know if, if this is something I want to fall, fall on right now. I appreciate staff's work on this, I think it's good that we have this. I don't know what the number of, in the counties, it's, it's 10, 15% of the counties that have a combined auditor, tax collector, I think, I think the number's basically fairly low. It is not required by the state constitution that it be an elected position, we have, we, but we have all of them. But I don't know if this is something this board has an appetite for, and I don't know, we have some pretty good people, and, and a lot of our problems that are bringing us to this was, I have fairly good faith going outside the circle of the two department heads and going to the elections and making sure somebody is qualified to be on the ballot so we don't find ourselves in this situation. That was a big issue. It wasn't, I mean, you know, you didn't have to be 18 breathing, there was requirements. And I, and so I think we have situations and they're all young enough, a lot younger than me, that they're going to be here for a while, and I think we're going to be in pretty good shape. So, I mean, I've, I've heard the, the talk that more people would apply for the job if it wasn't an elected position. I, I, I don't know, I, I, you know, elections are fun, I don't know why anybody would want to miss that. So, I, I don't know how much time we really are going to spend on this, or if everybody wants to, I, I just don't know if it, if, if it passes muster and I, this is something that, you know, you, we need to get a lot of support for. I have supported this in the past, and I know after it lost five years ago, is that four years, when it lost last time, it was stated by our tax, what? The, the tax collector that he kind of wished he had supported it back then, but those are issues that are under the bridge, literally, and I think we're digging ourselves out and we will soon be whole again, so. I, and I, I apologize for missing the last meeting, but I just, I, I don't know if I can, I can go forward, so, thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Bush, no?
Thank you through the chair. So, I, you know, was, had talked with quite a few department heads prior to the last meeting, and I always feel that the voters should have the decision or the choice, but I do hear, you know, that the way the ballot may be structured, it may be misleading a little bit, or not misleading, but from my constituents, I hear they don't like the ballot language that we put out there with the poll. Are you okay, Mike?
Yeah, I'm just, sorry.
I did have a conversation with the Auditor-Controller though, and that ultimately changed my mind last time, where she said, and it sounds like maybe she's had a change of heart, but she said that, you know, in the past, she would have applied if it hadn't been an elected position, and so it sounds like, from what our CAO said, that maybe she's had a change of heart. And I do think that the county with the current electeds are doing, it's doing a fabulous job, and so I, I really am happy with whatever the board chooses, but ultimately, my, my thoughts did change with the conversation that I had with the Auditor-Controller prior to the last discussion of this board.
Great, okay. Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. Based on our last conversation, I was, you know, kind of leaning towards going with the let the voters decide option, after hearing, you know, you all have experiences as a board that, that I don't have, as, you know, being the newest person here on the dais, but I also don't think that it's imperative that we move forward with this right now, so I think we could probably, it sounds like that's where it's leaning, I think we could probably simplify this by, you know, potentially considering this in the future, should it be, you know, something we want to revisit, but I don't think it's, it's something that we need to proceed with at this time, based on what I'm hearing.
Okay, well, let's, Supervisor Bone, and then we're going to go to the public.
And I'll look at county council on this. This is a pretty tough thing to decide in the future, because it has to be in a situation where there's a break that there isn't an elected, how's that work?
It would not come into effect until there were vacancies in both positions.
Okay, that's, so, I mean, is, so if the two people that were sitting in the seats ran again and won, is it, we can't just change it at an election, they have to be leaving their seat voluntarily, not just, right?
It would be once they leave their, they've already been elected and currently hold those positions, once they would come up for election, that at that time, there would be the director, the Office of Director of Finance would come in, would be established at that point.
Okay, thank you.
You have to hear it in the off years, so you could not reconsider this for four more years.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and see what the public thinks, and I do have one hand up in Zoom, and that is 7718. Star six to unmute, and, welcome.
Counsel Woski, I am saving my comments for important issues today. And this is a very important one, I scrawling support, not taking this particular action. I think the testimony of the current tax collector and auditor controller and the assistant auditor controller should be sufficient to go down the path that appears to be going down. I don't know who Rex was speaking about, but it was John Brotholme, as far as a prior tax collector. I could never hear him waver from his concern regarding having some non-elected position, but I could be corrected. Trying to keep it brief, I strongly support, on this case, not moving forward with anything on the ballot to combine the, the two positions and make a non-elected, thank you for your time.
Thank you commenter, and there are no other hands up in Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today.
Hi. I really don't want to turn into an old scold, notice the rhyming there, but I carry my Constitution in my purse, and so, listening, I went back. Usually I try to make a joke here, but this is not a laughing matter. We do need checks and balances. I was here, sitting back there somewhere, the day Karen Paz Dominguez came to this very podium and politely, articulately, and for 45 minutes explained why we need this kind of thing. Karen has not gone away. I'm not going away until they carry me out, I'm a DNR now, but doggone it, we've got to stop fighting the same fights over and over and over, and I'll be back this afternoon at 2:00 and at 3:00, because I feel like I've lived through this stuff. When, when what's his name, Butterfield, revealed the existence of the Watergate taping sys, the taping system, I scorched my first husband's white shirt I was ironing. So, you know, I wasn't always the old battle axe, I, I am now.
Thank you so much. All right, next. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Amy Christensen, the current Humboldt County elected Treasurer-Tax Collector. I wanted to state again that it is critical that the offices of the Auditor-Controller and the Treasurer-Tax Collector remain independent and elected by the people of Humboldt County. I do not anticipate seeing long-term cost savings for the general fund if a Department of Finance is approved by the voters and created. To maintain the strict internal controls currently in place between the Treasurer-Tax Collector staff and the Auditor-Controller staff, cross-training between those two departments cannot happen. staff, cross-training between those two departments cannot happen. Operations between the treasurer tax collector and the auditor controller are running efficiently, and I am confident that I see that continuing for the long term. So I encourage you not to place this item on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And next?
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Evenson. Again, just as last time, I'm here speaking as an individual, not for my office or the position I hold for the county. Um, I'm glad to hear that it sounds like we're moving toward potentially not sending this to the ballot. I, I had a list of reasons. I had another list to speak about today, but I, I think we're moving in the right direction and rather than holding this up for a long period of time, I'm just going to express my support of not moving this forward with, on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Welcome.
Gordon Clattworthy, running for first district supervisor. I'm also glad that this probably isn't going to go on the ballot. Uh, I think we need to have that separation. Um, and that's it. I, I can't, well, let's just hurry up.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing no additional commenters, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
Um, thank you. I, you know, I hear, uh, the commenters say, you know, don't place it on the ballot for the people to choose, which some, it somewhat bothers me. However, I do want to ask the CAO a question just, um, about the clarification of separation. So if we were to create a department of finance, there would be one director of department of finances, but it's my understanding that the two offices would remain separate and those checks and balances still would be in place. Well, the offices would fall under one leader, but it's sort of akin to the public defender and conflict council. You create firewalls between the offices so that there is a safeguarding in the sharing of information so that those safety nets are in place. And so, yes, the treasurer tax collector would still have their processes in place and the auditor controller would still have their processes in place. And, and I think that it could run very similar to the fashion that it is right now in having those separation of duties, but they would still fall under one leader if combined.
I understand that. Um, thank you. And I know that, um, under direction of this board a year ago, this is why this item came forward, and I want to recognize that it probably happened, or I'm just going to say it did happen because of the difficulties the county found itself in previously. However, also at that time, we had a lot of public or constituent people, my constituent people that reached out to me that, that were employees and vendors that felt that, you know, maybe a department of finance at that time would have been helpful, um, given that we seemed to struggle to, um, uh, figure out what to do with, with the current problems that we were having. And so I just want to recognize that. I'm happy to do whatever this board wishes at this time. I'm not stuck on one thing or the other, but I do really want to recognize this is not something that we brought forward just because we want a department of finance. Um, it came out of a lot of concern, also a lot of concern from employees and also a lot of concern from the public. And, um, and once again, as I stated, I'm happy to do, um, whatever the pleasure of the board is, but I, I don't, it's not a, uh, I don't feel that it is a power grab for this board. I feel it was, um, you know, moving in a direction for solutions and to try to, um, you know, make things work efficiently. And I do recognize that with the current electeds, the offices are both working very well at the current day. However, you know, things change, so I just want to state that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And Supervisor Wilson?
Well, I'd already, I mean, I'll just tell you, it already looks like without much more deliberation where this is going, so that I'm, I'm fine with that. I've said before, it's like, I think it's a reasonable conversation for the community to have. I think that I would be okay with it being on the ballot because I think there's cogent arguments in both directions. I would state that, uh, the independence that we see, uh, with relationship to this office, um, is reiterated through an independent audit that happens, also through the state, um, which is also an elected body. So you have a separately elected body that is independently reviewing what we have, you know, what we, what we have going here. But mostly this is a, this is a, this is a risk calculation. What you're asking, what we'd be asking the public is, is there a risk of fraud and abuse by consolidating or having that, having the auditor be hired under this, under a board or under this, within the institution? And there's risk, there is associated potential risk with relationship to that, fraud and corruption that people talk about, although hadn't been shown in the last, you know, few years that we've had in this discussion. And then on the other side of that is the risk of the politicalization, politicalization of the office itself through a democratic process, and that can happen too. We're, we're all put prone to that. We have, uh, influences with relationship to this. Um, we have, and any elected office, including the auditor, will ha- would have, um, donations, uh, would have, you know, there's, there, it's subject to, to political processes as well. It's not completely independent, uh, as one might imagine. Uh, and so I think we have, would have to, you know, what we'd be asking the public to do is balance between those two risk factors and which would cost more in terms of like with relationship to the community. We saw and we experienced what a politicized process can create, uh, within this institution and the, and what happened. And we, we see that. So when this board made the decision to potentially put this on the ballot before, we were informed by our experience, uh, from that. And so now that we're further away from that experience, I think maybe people feel like that's, that's okay. But what I heard today is an assumption of political succession. That also is not very democratic. We, it was said out loud here today, like, well, you know, we have good people working in the thing and we're, we're, it's, they're likely to be reelected. And that is an assumption of political succession, which I think is also something is not as democratic as one might imagine. And we complain about that as politicians and people always talk about, like, well, the incumbents have so much power and this, that and the other. It is one of those things that we talk about. So it's not, what I'm saying is, is pretty gray. And I was completely willing to have that conversation within the community to do that. It's okay. I'm like, you know, I, I, again, I do actually believe that the people we have working in these offices and are very competent and doing a very good job. And from that perspective, I'm like, yeah, okay, that risk factor is quite, is quite a bit lower now for sure. But as Supervisor Bushnell mentioned, the future is unknown with relationship to that. And so that is again, what we would be weighing in terms of those risk factors. Uh, if we don't do this today, I'm not, you know, I got so many other things to work on, including trying to get, you know, more people into our committees and all these other things. So it's going to be all right. I mean, I'm, I'm fine. Um, so those are just my thoughts on this. I just say I'm open to the concept of having a democratic process to decide this, but at the same time, uh, I think the people we have in doing the job right now are doing a great job. And so those are, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, supervisor. And at this point, anybody like to make a motion? I will go ahead and make a motion that we do not put this on the ballot. Is that simple enough? At this time. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, let's have more.
I'll second it because that's where we're getting. I don't know if anybody wants to wordsmith it and everything else. And when I said about succession, these are a couple of the offices that have been historically, as almost as long as I can remember, had succession from their number two coming up to be in their number one in the election process. So what I was doing is talking historically, but that was kind of, uh, it actually happened in the auditor controller's office when we got into this. So historically is what I was going off of. I wasn't saying that's how it goes, obviously. I just, you know, well, just, yes, you do. But with that being said, I mean, you go all the way back to, I mean, we can go back a long ways and, and, but we don't have to. So I mean, it's, I would love to have somebody new step in, but it hasn't been able to be done. It's usually just, you know, and, which is fine. And we've got good, young folks in there. They're going to have to run again in four years and, and maybe a hot shot will pop up and want to come in, or maybe somebody within the own office, which we've seen before, um, run. But I just think at this time and place, the stomach isn't there. The people I've heard of just don't want to see this right now. I, I'm not saying I don't support it because I'm scared to get that we, we get somebody in there that, um, creates havoc again, but, um, um, I would, uh, that's why I'm seconding. I ju- it's just not going to get there. I don't think it can pass. I think I would much rather worry about a road tax to fix our roads than I would anything else, but that's why you got the second.
Okay. Uh, well, if we can try and wrap it up here soon, Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I, I think it's an interesting discussion about, you know, whi- which is more democratic. I mean, I think they're both equally democratic in their own ways, whether we have two independently elected folks through a democratic process, which is what we have right now, or whether we put it to the voters to decide that actually we want to do things differently, but we want to create this different form of oversight. But those, those are two, um, I would say equally valid alternatives. I just don't, you know, I think the narrative around this has been, um, that one is inherently better or worse than the other. And, um, but what I am hearing from, and this is one where I'm leaning heavily on y'all's expertise, honestly. Um, you've been through something different than I have. Um, I will also say that, you know, I hear loud and clear from, you know, folks within our own organization and, and community members who feel that, that this isn't, isn't necessary, that we had kind of a one-off experience, but that this is something that they believe, you know, strongly should remain the way it has been. And so I, you know, I'm listening to that and, and I'm, you know, prepared to vote, but I, I just want to say neither is, um, intended to be undemocratic and both are valid alternatives. Um, and, you know, asking the voters to decide about these two specific positions or asking them to decide about a different structure within the county are, th- those are both, um, equally valid and neither is intended to create some kind of nefarious, uh, alternative. So, uh, I'd like, you know, to inspire trust in our government by saying, you know, that, that we're trying to, we're trying to wrestle with this difficult thing in a really above-board way. So thanks for everyone's patience around it.
Great. Thank you for that. And I could have made it more complicated, but I kept the motion very simple. I could have said something like, in order to continue to maintain stringent fiscal accountability, I, I just want to make it really clear that we are so lucky to have, uh, the people at the helm in these two departments and the people that are in those departments and the work they're doing to bring all of our past audits up to, up to snuff, literally, and catch up. So, uh, with that, final comments, Supervisor Bone?
Final, people need to realize that we probably have anywhere between 150 and 200 audits a year done in different departments because every grant, every federal fund we get, every state fund comes in and gets audited, and then we have separate auditors. So when people say we can go, you know, we can write checks to our friends, we can't write checks. We can't sign checks. I don't even know if we have a checkbook. So, I mean, I don't. So, 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 you know, but yeah, we don't even get credit cards. I mean, you know, we've got to pay for our own coffee in the mornings. Um, but with that being said, everything is audited, audited and audited again. Then you'll see, we'll have a full audit from team come in here that goes over our book. So it's, it's, it's really great to make it sound willy-nilly, but it's not. Our, our monies are, are pretty well tracked. And we have won finance awards, I think, for the last 12 or 13 years consecutive, if I'm not right. Well, we had a little glitch in there, but we've won some finance awards for what we've done, and I applaud the team for that also.
Supervisor Bushnell, final comment?
Final, yes. Thank you. Uh, I just want to, I really do agree with Supervisor Wilson and Arroyo. Also, nothing of the discussion today is about the current, um, people that we have in that office. They are very efficient, and I think we've said that and re-said that many times. And, uh, so I just, you know, it is, um, especially with, uh, what Supervisor Arroyo said is what I was saying earlier, both are a very democratic process. And so to allude that it's not, uh, is, is just kind of not right. So I'm happy to vote.
All right. Do we have our voting tabs? There they are. Go ahead and cast your votes.
Thank you. Motion carries four to one.
Great. Thank you very much for that. And, um, we are going on to our next item on the agenda, which is item four, approval of the successor memorandum of understanding between the county of Humboldt, In-Home Health, In-Home Support Services Public Authority and Service Employees International, or SEIU Local 2015, for persons in the In-Home Support Services Public Authority as defined in the Public Authority Employee, or Employee Relations Policy. And we have Director O'Handen here to present from Human Resources.
Good morning, board members. It's still morning, right? Almost?
Yeah, you got it.
Got it. I'm Zach O'Handen, Director of Human Resources here at the county of Humboldt. Um, that was quite a mouthful we gave you. Um, so the item you have in front of you, um, we're going to keep it pretty, pretty short and sweet, um, as a lot of the information is in the staff report and in, can be found in the memorandum of understanding that's attached to the staff report. Um, I do think at, at some point we need to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and move over to being the governing body of the In-Home Support Services Public Authority.
Okay. And so should we do that now, county council? Okay, we are adjourned as a Board of Supervisors and we are reconvening as the Public Authority Employer Employee Relations Group, or what's the name?
The governing body of In-Home Support of Services Public Authority.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
It's very straightforward process, as you can see.
All right. We are reconvened.
So we have reconvened now. Um, so basically at this point, this is sort of the final step in the process. There's been back and forth negotiations, as that's how negotiations work, over a period of time. Um, there has been, uh, you know, agreement between, um, the Public Authority and the SEIU 2015 on, uh, the attached memorandum of understanding. Not going to outline all the changes. Some of them aren't really too, too crazy to highlight. The big one, of course, is, um, the $1 an hour additional supplement, um, to pay for IHSS providers. Um, so I'll highlight that one. Um, but at this point, it's essentially your board voting to ratify and allow the chair of the governing body of the In-Home Support of Services Public Authority to sign the documents so we can move forward and, um, get that information to the state for approval.
Great. Thank you very much. Any clarifying questions from the board? No? So we'll go to public comment and in Zoom. Imagine there's a hand up. I need to clean my screen up here. Yeah, we got one hand up, seven, seven, one, eight. Welcome.
Ken Swobski, if the IHSS workers are happy, then I'm happy. And, uh, that would be a great thing because we all like to be happy. Thank you. I'll be here to speak.
Thank you, commenter. That sets the record for brevity today. And so there's one more hand up in Zoom, and that is zero, one, one, six.
I'd also like to support the, the dollar raise for the, the home support workers. And also, just, I don't know if it's possible, but consider waiving the requirement of COVID vaccination. It's not really still a thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another brief comment. All right. And that's it in Zoom. So we'll bring it here to those in the audience today. Welcome.
Good afternoon, supervisors. Um, I'm Vivian Denniston. I'm a care provider here in our community and regional vice president for SEIU Local 2015. We are 2,000 home care provider union strong in Humboldt County and 10,000 strong over the North State. I'm pleased that today we have before you the product of work that Humboldt County and the union negotiating team have worked on for the last two years, a contract for IHSS workers, the largest private sector workforce here. The contract contains a lot for our workers. It will help workers put food on the table and keep workers. It will help workers put food on the table and keep a roof over their heads. We appreciate that the county has recognized in this contract, we need to have a personal protect, personal protection equipment to provide safe and sanitary care to our seniors and people with disabilities. And also, making a serious investment in providing quality care by providing training to caregivers ranging from CPR to first aid. This contract will not only benefit us and the those we care for, but also our whole community. It brings over half of a million dollars in new state and federal funding into our budget. Wages paid to workers generates economic activity, and higher wages are an incentive for our workers to remain as care providers when they're, we are faced with a serious caregiver shortage in Humboldt County. I hope that each of you will vote yes to approve the contact, contract, yes to caregivers livelihoods, and yes to this vital program that allows our most vulnerable to stay at home safely and live a long, healthy life.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Wonderful. Thanks for being here, everybody. And anybody else want to comment on this item? This is your opportunity. Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll bring it back to the board.
I'll just make a motion, uh, to accept the staff recommendations for ratification.
Okay. Motion by Supervisor Bushnell, and second by Supervisor Wilson. Any additional comments, questions? Seeing none. Supervisor Arroyo, yeah?
I'd just like to acknowledge, um, the important work that you all do, and I'm very grateful. Um, I know that it is hard, and I appreciate hearing your stories and experiences. And I, um, I'm pleased that we're able to work together, um, to, you know, make sure that people who need essential care receive it. So thank you for serving in your roles.
Well said. Supervisor Bone?
Vivian, tell your husband. It was great seeing him the other night and having a little talk with him.
All right. And with that, yes, thank you so much for all your work. And please continue to visit us, because without your purple, I don't know what we'd be doing, so. Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna do one more item, because I think it's really quick. Sorry, yeah, let's take the vote. How about that? Let's vote. Uh, yes, thank you. That's why we have a whole board here. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Five zero. Thank you so much, Zach. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Woo-hoo. All right. Uh, we've got one more quick item before we take a break for lunch, and that is item five, a resolution for the temporary employment of retired annuitant. Excuse me?
We need to adjourn as the governing body of the-
Thank you. Yes. All right. We are adjoin, adjourned as the governing body, and we are reconvening as the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, County Council. And thank you everybody for backing me up on this stuff. There's always little, little pieces, but together we get it right. Uh, so item five, resolution for the temporary employment of retired annuitant as Library Operations Manager with the Humboldt County Library. And is CA O'Haze is gonna present.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Madrone. Uh, yeah, this is a matter of procedure in order to, uh, waive the 180-day, uh, waiting period with Calpers. Your board has to hear this as a departmental item. Uh, Rhonda Wittenberg, who has retired after 52 impressive years of service with the library, uh, carries with her a monumental amount of institutional knowledge and is pivotal in succession planning and training, uh, oncoming staff. And thus, we request your board approve, uh, this item before you today.
Okay, great. Any questions?
Make a motion for staff's recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second, and we'll go to the public. Um, and I do not see any hands up in Zoom. And we'll see if there is any comments here in the audience today. Seeing none, other than Holly waving goodbye. Um, we will bring it back to the board. And we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's go ahead and vote on this item.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Great. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, and I'm wondering, and I'm looking at, since Director Ford's here and Mr. Bimbo's here, are these items, are these returns from what we've already decided on? Do you expect any controversy on them?
There will be discussion.
Long discussion, or?
I'm just saying, our next, our next time set's at two o'clock.
Yeah, but we're gonna be back at, um, 1:15. So we're gonna have 45 minutes. I believe that will be enough to accomplish at least two of those, if not three of those, before we have our two o'clock time set. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and do that. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and take a break for lunch and health. We'll be back here at 1:15 sharp, and we'll pick these items up. And I believe we're gonna need to read each of them into the record as we proceed with the basic public hearings. So I'll see you all at 1:15. We are adjourned. Great. Thank you. All right. Welcome back to our meeting, uh, the Board of Supervisors. And the next item on the agenda is item one, Benbow Properties Zone Reclassification. And I believe we need to read this into the record.
Thank you, Chair Madrone. Currently before the board is an ordinance amending section 311-7 of the Humboldt County Code by rezoning property in the Benbow area, PLN-2021-17037, Benbow Properties Inc.
Great. Thank you very much for that. And I believe we heard this, uh, last month, or three weeks ago, rather, and, uh, some changes were made, and that's why we're back here today. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chair. Uh, good afternoon. John Ford and Cliff Johnson with the Planning and Building Department to present this item, which, as you mentioned, was previously considered by the board. The board considered it to allow it to be, uh, re-noticed to include a Q-zone. Uh, the Q-zone has been written and is included as an attachment, uh, to this item. And I'm gonna allow Mr. Johnson to walk through what the Q-zone says and does.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, members of the board. I'm gonna try to share my screen here, just walk you through some of the changes that we were proposing, uh, with the direction from the board, from the, uh, October 24th meeting to come back with a Q-zone. The, uh, your board had expressed some concern relative to the location of these two properties, uh, to Highway 101, which is, uh, potentially eligible for scenic highway status. And so the idea was to bring back a Q-zone that would limit some of the, um, or that would ensure that the scenic quality of this area was protected. Uh, just real briefly, to show you the two properties in, in question that are proposing to be rezoned. This is looking south to the southern property that's proposed to be rezoned. And then this view here, if you look just past the golf course, is the northern property that is proposed to be rezoned. And so, um, what we have done is brought back a Q-zone that includes some design standards. And I'll just read through them briefly here. Um, existing topography and vegetation shall be retained to the maximum extent feasible. Structures, signs, and plant materials shall be constructed, installed, and planted to complement, enhance, and retain scenic views from Highway 101. Proposed structures and signs shall not impede views of the highway of the forested hillside located to the east. Vegetation shall be installed where necessary to soften views of new buildings and to incorporate new development into the existing landscape. Potentially unsightly features such as parking lots, trash enclosures, and outside storage shall be located in areas not visible from the highway, or shall be screened from view by installed vegetation. Mechanical equipment shall be screened from all public views. Exterior lighting more than seven feet in height shall be shielded and directed downward.
Cliff, can you just go back one?
Absolutely.
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Uh, exterior lighting more than seven feet in height shall be shielded and directed downward. Lighting shall not spill off premises. Shipping containers shall be prohibited. Exterior walls and roofing materials of unfinished or galvanized metal are prohibited. Any vegetation installed for the purpose of implementing these special restrictions shall be native and drought tolerant. Buildings shall be designed to add visual interest. Structures with flat roofs shall include projecting cornices of a design sufficient to add visual interest. And lastly, buildings shall be designed to reflect interior spaces and shall not include false projections that rise above the true roof line, except that parapets and gables may be installed, provided that the side returns or roof planes extend around the building. So these, uh, we came up with these because we believe that they would, um, help to protect the scenic character by ensuring that incompatible development, um, and unsightly structures would not be permissible. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any clarifying questions? Supervisor Bushnell?
Um, could you go back one slide? Um, so mechanical equipment shall be screened from all public views. What does that mean?
Um, thank you for that question. I, I know I had discussed this with the applicant a little bit as well, and they, they had some concerns. The intention there is really for, um, generally heating and cooling equipment to be screened, so that you don't have, uh, unsightly HVAC, um, you know, equipment maybe on top of the building or somewhere where it would detract from public views.
Okay, so maybe we could put that in parentheses, HVAC equipment?
Yep.
Because that could be, can, uh, that could be a lot of things. And then also, uh, potentially unsightly features such as parking lots, number four. Uh, parking, parking lots, trash enclosures, and outside storage shall be located in an area where not visible from the highway. So, um, with the lower portion of the rezone, parking lots are visible everywhere, and there are other entities right there right now, other businesses that have their parking lots visible. How would you say that gets accomplished?
Um, the, well, the idea there was that any parking lots that would potentially be visible would be viewed, uh, would be screened by installed vegetation. So maybe a fence with some vegetation on it or something to, to, uh, screen that.
So I, I don't have a problem with that, except that we don't require that of the other businesses that are there currently, and I don't think we should require additional. I, I understand the thought process, but I don't think the community is worried about the parking lot. And just my input on that one. And then can you go to the next one? And then number seven, which I do understand, but there are currently already shipping containers in that area. So if we're gonna require it of this applicant, then what would be, what would you propose for the other shipping containers that are already there? Wait, can I have an answer, please?
Sure. Through the chair, I think, uh, well, first I would say that we, we're happy to, to remove any of these, uh, suggested restrictions, if, if that's what the board chooses. Um, the idea was that this was something that, um, we were trying to interpret what the board had, had asked for us to bring back, and we really wanted to just give a, a range of options.
Okay. So I'm just asking clarifying questions for the, for the ones that you have, that I saw.
If I could jump into that a little bit. I, I mean, part of the struggle here is that this is the context of a scenic highway. So what we're trying to do is identify what should be done along a scenic highway, understanding that there is a bigger, more global issue that needs to be addressed. But this is really a starting point for that. And one of the things, unfortunately, that's often seen is when businesses are designed with a street frontage, oftentimes, the highway is viewed as the back. And so that becomes a repository of all kinds of unsightly stuff. And so what this is really trying to do is identify that you don't get to just throw all the unsightly stuff at the back of the building that's visible from a highway that we want to be a scenic entrance into the county, and, and that be okay.
Okay. Um, I don't have a problem with it probably, except for up and down. You know, those containers are everywhere, and I understand, like, moving in a direction that way. So I don't know, maybe, you know, during construction, they would have those there. So maybe, you know, I, I don't know. But they're, they're currently right next door there today.
And that's probably the illustration of why that would get put in.
I, I understand. I'm just voicing my, uh, opinion.
Thank you. And Supervisor Wilson, and then Bone?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm all right with these. I see where you're going with this. I, I do want to, you know, I think, uh, emphasize that this is a trajectory. Just because it wasn't done, you know, these provisions weren't enacted in the past doesn't mean they shouldn't be enacted in the future. And when you're talking about other properties, this isn't, um, this isn't for them, uh, in the current context. This is as we move forward. This is why we're, this is why we adjudicate these things at the board level. Um, I, I would say that it's interesting when you say shipping containers shall be prohibited. I mean, and sometimes people use them as part, it, as part of construction themselves. And, and so I would say, um, and whether they're, whether they're used with relationship to temporary use with relationship to the construction of the, of the site might be an applicable item. But also people have, I mean, you know, they, some people use them in actually building, uh, structures. So I was, I would say that, um, these would be, you know, unattached containers would be the issue, and only during, you know, only, and not during construction of the site. Some, some, for, some, something to that effect would be fine with me, although it's, it's fine the way it is. Um, the, the, I, I'm fine with this the way it is right now. It's better than what we, than what we have currently, which is nothing. Um, at some point, I do want to talk about the D-zone on this, um, uh, and speak to that for a minute, too. We don't have to talk about that right in, in this moment, but I would do want to speak to that as well. Um, so, sorry to be all over the place with this, but I, I feel like this is mostly in the right direction. I'm not concerned about, um, what happens next door. Um, and the community as a whole is the everybody, because we all drive through this space. So it's not just, you know, the, it's not just, um, neighbors or people within 300 feet or within two miles. It's like the whole state of California drives through this when they come visit Humboldt County. And this is, this is our entrance. This is what represents us. Um, and so I think it's important that we, we, uh, try and, uh, and do well. And, and, you know, mostly what this is asking for is just good design. So a lot of the problems and issues that we have with this, with relationships to these issues is just no one's thinking about those designs upfront. This is the opportunity to do so. Um, so I'm, I think it's, it's what we're asking for, more or less.
Supervisor Bone, and then Bushnell?
On a lot of these, Cliff, why don't you take a look? And I don't know if it's Napa. I've seen them in Napa quite a bit. Um, the storage containers, a lot of them, um, I noticed that they're dropping, um, two-by-sixes on them or four-by, and they're, they're actually framing them. They're running two runners down, and then they're lapping wood over the top of them. Some are putting, even putting a roof structure on them, but a lot of them are just siding them. And they look just as good as, I mean, they've got them by the airport there. There's quite a few of them that way that are sited, and maybe you make a requirement of those that are facing the highway, because it, and then it just becomes a building with siding on it, basically. And as we move forward, it is, uh, takes a lot less resources out of the environment. And a lot of these containers are becoming up, as I think Supervisor Wilson mentioned. They're being used quite a bit in, uh, I noticed in West Virginia, they're actually starting to use them quite a bit in building, using them as the, the core and then building on them, because they have such, they have such good stress weight and stuff like that. So I, I think we can make it somewhat more eye appealing. And that, this, this area now is really, really, I drove by it the other day on purpose. It's really, really hard to see this lot now, because there's already, um, mature landscaping separating the golf course, because it's part of the driving range on nine, I think that is, that's coming in to the right. So they've got pretty good growth right there now, already separating it from the highway. You can't really see the lot. So a lot of what you're, what you're asking for is already attained.
Supervisor Bushnell?
So I, I was gonna ask that, um, what Supervisor Bone said about dressing the containers up, um, that maybe that could be, uh, something that we allow them, but add that they need to be, have some kind of beautification or structure looking.
Yeah, I think that would be consistent with what's trying to be achieved here.
Okay.
And just have the, it could be a-
And just have the, it could be as simple as having the shipping containers match the other design standards that are contained herein.
Yeah. And then also through the chair, the applicant is here, I was wondering if he would like to say anything if we're going to allow that.
Yeah, absolutely. And so these changes being proposed are easy enough to make on the fly right now, right?
Yep.
Not on the fly, but make them clear at this point. So the applicant, please come forward, share with us your thoughts.
Because I have a short memory, I want to do this kind of reverse. Mike just said that no one is really thinking about the design on the upfront side. I don't think that could be further from the truth. I think since the family bought that valley in 1921, that has been the, probably the, the most significant thing, is what is the design of the buildings that are going to go in there and be there for a long, long time. And so what we're doing, I think, started with the design. That was just a comment that I didn't think was really reflective of, of what's been done there. The planning, the parking lot, now I'll go back in order. Michelle already covered this. You're going to see the parking lot and the valley, because it's in a valley, the 101 comes into it downhill from the south and steeply downhill from the north. There's no way to completely hide it. But the family and the people that own the end have planted trees all over the valley already, and more of that can be done. I'm more concerned, as it relates to the planning though, in number nine, in which it says, "Shall be native and drought tolerant." There's not a lot of drought tolerant shielding things. One of them is oleanders, which are used all over this state, but they're not native to Humboldt County. Blackberries grow everywhere, they're not native to Humboldt County. Some of the trees that get planted, we don't want to plant palms or things that are quote, unquote inappropriate, but I think things that will actually shield the property and, and do work in Humboldt County. We've used, again, we've used oleanders in the valley in a number of places. So I think that the word native vegetation, I don't know what the right word is, but I don't think that's it. Thank you. The definition of the mechanical has been addressed. I quite frankly, don't have any problem with no, no shipping containers except for construction. Every contractor that I've used and been around uses them on a temporary basis. I think Rex makes up, brings up a good point. There's lots of these things where they use wood aesthetically and architecturally to make them look good. That's not our plan. I was against them to start with, when I opposed the buildings that went there, and I have no problem with not using them except for construction. However, in the, in the future, if that, if, if it's up, if the board thinks that they can be done aesthetically, I have no objection to that. I think that pretty well covers it. Most of these things I'm for. I, I do agree with Mike completely though. I think the design of anything in this corridor is, is the most critical part of what you're looking to do. You see it from the highway if you're going to, I, I don't really like being singled out as the first guy to do this in the area, but I'm, I'm all for it. I think that especially coming in and out of the, out of the valley. There are some things on lighting, I don't know when you get it, I don't know that you can restrict it in a house. I, I went and looked at all the security lighting that's in place down there that PG&E puts in. They do, you can see it from off-site, but it's pointed down. So in parking lots and stuff like that, you're going to be able to see it, but it's not really glaring. So unless there's any other questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Supervisor Wilson?
It's not a question, it's a clarification. So the difference isn't around these policies specific to your design. What I'm speaking to is, this is kind of like the first time we're trying to apply these policies from a general plan policy moving forward. So I wasn't in my mind thinking of your plan set.
No, I know that.
I was really thinking of like, we're going to start, it appears anyway, the trajectory is to start thinking about the application of the policy and the general plan for the scenic highways. And you just happen to be the first one in front of us where this happens to have, we're having this discussion. So it's really sort of, that's, that is sort of the bigger policy question. It was not specific to design.
I knew that's where you were coming from, and I fully support that, as I said at the last meeting. I, I don't mind. But the question was raised, I think I mentioned, you guys mentioned to John, can it be retroactive? In other words, can we only, when you put these things in effect, can we get rid of some of the things that are there, or do we just have to wait till they're? So what is the way to clean up a, a facility?
That is a big policy question we're going to have to have a discussion about, but probably, and I'm through the chair, I think it's not on our agenda to talk about that trajectory at the moment, so.
But often that will happen.
Yeah.
That will often happen when somebody comes forward for a discretionary permit.
Yeah.
And that becomes the opportunity to maybe try and bring certain other things into compliance. But also, I just wanted to mention, as far as plants, yeah, oleanders, I get it, they're all over the state. In fact, when you take your landscape contractor license, you better know you're oleanders, even though they're not native to our area. Blue blossom, mountain lilac, it's a native plant, it's a, you know, there's white thorn, there's blue blossom. There are a number of seaanothis shrub species that get to be, you know, 12, 15 feet tall, and they hedge up really nicely, they're evergreen, and they provide a really nice puffer. So, and people love lilacs, so, it's a mountain lilac. Anyway, just a couple of other thoughts.
All right, thank you.
For you on your plant list. Okay, any other thoughts before we go to the public? All right, let's go ahead and do that. We do not have any hands up in Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today that might wish to comment, and so please come around. I see one individual making their way to the podium. Welcome.
Good e, or afternoon.
Yeah.
Been here all day already. I'm happy to see the direction that the board is taking with this. Q-zone, I think, is really, really good. I was worried the southern lot was maybe not, the 039 lot was maybe not going to be included, so I'm happy to see it is. I don't know how we're going to address the building that was already built. Sounded like that was already built, kind of in a quickness, the metal building, that is a metal building that's paved all the way around it with almost no space between that and the road to shield that in the future. And if these, if that lot specifically was sold, and any of that vegetation was cut down or even brush removal between the intersection of the Benbow Drive there, looking towards the south, the A-frame that's now a little dwelling there, that would all be in view, including the building that, you know, you could almost be a tire shop, as Mike Wilson said last time when we brought this forward, as far as what the new zoning is. So my name's not on the valley, but I have a long love for that valley. And I really want to just make sure that we take the public's input and really keep the beautification of that valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else seeing none? We'll bring it back here to the board. Supervisor Arroyo.
Well, I'd be glad to move staff recommendation unmodified.
Does, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Does that include the conversations that we had about including HVAC and so forth and so on?
That can include the HVAC item. I don't, I don't want to modify the native plant item though. There's plenty of native, beautiful native landscaping to choose from.
And the container.
I heard that it would be temporary, so we could put a provision in that it would be temporary only.
I.
Or.
Or shielded.
I, I have concerns that in the future, if it doesn't remain as the same owner, and someone wants to utilize those and could dress them up, like have been, are they're being done all over the place, I would ask for that from the motion maker.
Yeah, I've seen them in, you know, certainly in architectural designs where they are made more beautiful. So I heard staff say something about design, you know, consistent with the other provisions. Does that, does something like that, could something like that be created quickly as far as language?
We could include language that shipping containers may be used as part of the construction of the facility, subject to compliance with the other guidelines contained herein.
That sounds fine with me.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion with a couple of modifications. Do you want to read back those modifications, just so we're all clear?
Could do that, or could show the screen so you see the changes.
That sounds perfect.
Whatever preference, okay.
Good call.
Should be coming up. So changes to number five, instead of mechanical, we're striking that and saying heating and cooling equipment. And to number seven, it would read shipping containers other than for use during construction shall be subject to these design standards.
Okay. Motion maker and seconder, are we clear?
Director has a look.
A skewed look.
Yeah, I, I think that that works. The struggle I'm having, I'm concerned that somebody may in the future have to interpret that. And I, I clearly understand that the intent of the board is to allow temporary construction or temporary shipping containers during construction, and then separately to allow shipping containers to you, be used as part of the building design. And then in that case, it would comply with the guidelines herein.
The screening, et cetera.
And, well, and the siding and the roof and, and the mechanical equipment, everything else.
With the ultimate goal of keeping the, the view shed.
Right.
So you're suggesting clarification of that one?
I think Cliff's getting there. Shipping containers may temporarily be used during construction, during periods of construction, and then may be used as part of the design of the building, subject to compliance with these guidelines.
Please still have number four.
There is an issue with number four with the parking lot. You're going to see it no matter what, how tall of anything you put there, because it is in that valley.
Well, I think the thing there though is that I think we're reading into it that it doesn't say can't be seen, it says shall be screened. And, and so the objective there really is to, you know, minimize the visibility of it without trying to make it completely invisible.
Blend it in.
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell, are we there?
I, can I, I want to ask another question. So with the parking lot though specifically, it's, you know, you were in a, the valley is lower than the freeway, and when you come across, you, that's what you see, you would have to have a 12-foot anything to, so I'm just curious, can you give me an example of what, if required, if something's required? I mean, you're obviously going to require something to screen it, so what would it be? And if that?
So normally, simply what would be done is you would take five to 10 feet of space around the perimeter of the lot and devote that to landscaping. And, you know, that would be the use of native trees, which could be like coastal live oak, which are evergreen. It could be something to that effect, which are both native and drought tolerant. It could be some of the things the Supervisor Madrone mentioned, seaanothis, some things to give some height over time. It's not going to happen immediately. But then also some, some dimension to it with the lower shrubs, and you create a combination of those. And it's not that you completely make the site invisible, it's that what you see first is the landscaping. What attracts your eye is the green that surrounds the lot, and then the lots behind it. I, I don't know, if, if we wanted to completely screen it, I, I'm being facetious here, I'm sorry, I don't have a better way to say this, but we'd require like a 20-foot wall.
It still wouldn't work.
And that's not, that's not what we're trying to achieve.
Right.
I understand.
California bay is another one, although that turns into a big tree, but you can hedge it as well. Supervisor Arroyo.
To this point, I think we do have a list of native landscaping that we give out, is that correct?
Yes.
So that might be a source for, for this, but yeah, there's lots of options.
Okay. Well, Supervisor Wilson?
And again, I appreciate like this, I mean, if we had actually had this policy developed through our process and through the planning commission, we wouldn't have to actually have this discussion in too, in too much detail, but that's okay. This is a start. I think this is, pretends for what is going to, you know, need to happen when we seek scenic highway designation. And I will emphasize that it, it, you know, traditionally around this, it's like, yeah, plants get planted when, you know, and then they grow up and they can grow bigger, and there are things like willows and maples and all kinds of things. But more than that, it's creating the space for those things to be planted. You can't rely on your neighbor's screening to do that in this design process, because you don't know what, as, as, as Mr. Benbo stayed, you know, you kind of, you might have stuff on the neighbor's property, but that's, you can't rely on that with relationship to the, the requirements of the, of the development within this boundary. I think this is great. I think what you guys have put together looks good enough to get us moving through this. I think it's a great improvement, it's a good trajectory, and I look forward to this, these projects getting built and, and seeing some, you know, some activity in the valley there.
Okay. Sounds like we're about ready to vote then. So if we could have voting tabs, there they are. Look at that, Nikki is on. Okay, so we'll go ahead and cast our votes.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Joe. Motion carries 5-0.
Great. Thank you very much. And we do have two more items for the planning department, but we also have a time set at 2:00. Do you want to take one of them on, even if we go a little late? I don't think that time set's going to go for a whole hour with the Southern Humboldt bid. But it is time set.
Depending on how much discussion there is.
The next one's identical.
The next one's identical, and the one after that is 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Why don't we go ahead and jump into the next one then, even if we push the other 2:00 just slightly late? So, okay, let's go ahead and start the second one, which we need another reading by county council, I believe.
Thank you, Chairman Joe. Currently before the board is an ordinance amending section 311-7 of the Humboldt County Code by rezoning property in the Benbow area. PLN 2021-17209, Rock and Sky LLC.
Great. I was hoping we didn't have to read all of those parcel numbers. So with that, Director Ford and Cliff Johnson, please.
Thank you. Going to share my screen in a second, and I just have a very brief presentation. As with the other rezone application, it's in the Benbow area, and these were heard by the board, by your board, on October 24th. And the main concern was relative to the potential of the properties to be used for cannabis without public notice. And so what we did here for these, this area in Benbow, just wanted to kind of show you the area that we're talking about, which is really the, kind of the right portion of the hillside there that's proposed to be rezoned. And what we had presented in the staff report is a Q-zone that would do two things. Number one, it would limit commercial cannabis activities, it would make them conditionally permitted. And I did have a brief discussion with the applicant property owner. They have some concern relative to this, because in their view, even smaller cannabis activity would then need to go through the, the most significant permit process that we have. And understanding that the concern from the board, your board, was really public notice, we are suggesting that that be changed to have this restriction, which is that all commercial cannabis activities otherwise principally permitted shall be subject to a special permit. The public notice requirements for both a special permit and a conditional use permit are the same. And so that would appear to equally address those concerns. The other restriction in the Q-zone would add these two development restrictions, which are intended to help. are intended to help address some of the same concerns that were raised on the other properties that we were just discussing. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions from the board? Supervisor Wilson?
I just want to, I think these are good provisions, and I just want to note that just as of the last year or so, the proliferation of off, non-shielded night lighting, industrial night lighting along the highway has just been crazy. I don't know if people have noticed this, but it is all over the place, and you see it south of Eureka, you see it in all of our industrial spaces, but you're also seeing it on sort of some of the housing that you see along the, and I'm just saying, we really need to catch up on this, because it's even, I hate to bring this up, the billboards that are being relit with new lighting, it's all unshielded, and this is, it's not, it's trending in a bad direction. So I'm glad this is here, I'm glad we're thinking about it, I'm hoping that we get our lightning ordinance to us as soon as possible. So unless there's other comments with relationship to this situation, those are mine.
Any other board members? Okay, seeing no more questions, we'll go ahead, is the applicant here? And yeah, we'll invite the applicant back up, once again.
Yeah, and thank you Cliff for adding that in there, because as previously written, the cannabis ordinance, it's already very restrictive. The topography leads it to restriction, and to make it even harder at this late date, I don't think would be fair. I don't think you're, I don't think there'll be light there, but I'd certainly think, given the topography of the land, you're not going to see any lighting, and I think the planning department will figure that out, if and when he makes an application. Other, the other thing I do want to point out, though, is, because I heard it come about roads in the Z thing, there's about half a mile, a little over half a mile, of county road that failed in the 60s and 70s that services those 30 lots. I was up there yesterday, none of it meets any kind of a standard. I'm in the construction business, it'd probably cost the county a million bucks to fix that road, so that you can access those lots. And one of the things that the applicant, that Rock and Sky is working on is to vacate those roads. There's three people that don't live there, one is the Chicago School of Mines, they own a lot. There's a fire department guy that can't get to his lot, because the creek washed the county road out, and there's one other individual that he's still seeking. With those three signatures, we'll present, if we can get those three signatures, we'll present a vacation, application to the county, which Public Works has already indicated they would love to have.
All right, thank you for that. Any other questions from the board, before we go to the public comment? All right, we'll go to Zoom first, and there are no hands up in Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today that might like to speak on this. I see one individual coming forward. Welcome again.
Good afternoon again. Again, I'm happy to see where this is going. I think the merging of these lots and rezoning is a good idea, so there's more usable land that can be purposed. Couple concerns I do have, and that is, I don't know the APN that it is, but in past history, there's a lot right off, at the very bottom of Red Rock, I guess I'd notice, next to Matt Troutrell's, it was a very busy cannabis site in the past, very, very visible from the freeway, very visible from the golf course. I just want to clarify that if that space is going to have cannabis on it, that should probably be in a Q-zone or some sort of extra restraint, so we can understand what that, how that affects the view shed, because it's in clear sight of everything, and in the past, it was a very busy cannabis space. I think other than that, I think the other things that the planning, planning department will oversee will suffice to keep this on track. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back here to the board. Supervisor Wilson?
I was just wondering if staff could address that question with relationship to that particular parcel.
Not familiar with which parcel he's talking about, we were just conversing about that.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Not related to this application, is that correct?
No, it is.
No, hold on, please, thank you. It would, do you see it on there, Cliff?
Well, I'm not sure, but what I would say is that if it is related to this application, then the Q-zone would cover it, yes.
Yeah.
And that was what the speaker was asking for, so it sounds like we've got that covered. Great, I see thumbs up all the way around. Okay, any other comments from the board? Seeing none, would somebody like to make a motion?
Y'all looking at me? I'll make a motion for stop recommendations.
Second.
There were no corrections, right? No.
All right, so we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell, and a second by Supervisor Wilson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and do our votes. Are you looking at me?
Eight eyes over there.
Okay, here he comes, he's almost there. There it is.
Thank you, motion carries 5-0.
Great, thank you very much, and look at that, it is 2:00, so we're right on time for our 2:00 time set, and then after that, I doubt that will take our entire hour. And so after that, we'll pick back up on item three, the Chuck Wright lot line adjustment, and then we have item four, public carrying for purchase of real property. So we'll see if we can fit those in after this, but yes, Supervisor Bone?
30 seconds to Chuck Wright, so we get stopped back to work.
That sounds good, let's go ahead and do the Chuck Wright thing first, if it really is going to take that 30 seconds or a minute or two, we'll go ahead and get that done. Thanks for that suggestion, Supervisor Bone. Although some of the staff are going to be here for the 3:00 anyway. You want to read in, Scott, please?
Currently before the board is an ordinance amending section 311-7 of the Humboldt County Code by rezoning property in the Corvell area, PLN-2023-18059, Wright.
Great, thank you for that, and Director Ford?
As County Council mentioned, this is a lot line adjustment and a rezone, and what the, basically, it reconfigures the property to allow property to be conveyed to a larger landowner, and to retain a smaller parcel with a home site, and to allow that parcel to remain within TPZ. I'd like to share my screen, if I could.
Okay.
So, very simply, if you can see it, the line I'm pointing to right there goes from there to there, this line here goes from here to here, this becomes a resultant parcel, this becomes the resultant parcel, that little dot of AE goes away. That's what we're talking about. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have applicants here? And we'll first see if there are questions from the board, Supervisor Bone?
I make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Bone, a second by Bushnell, although we haven't had public comment. Is there an applicant here that wishes to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board, and there's no hands up in Zoom. Anybody here in the audience say would like to speak on this particular agenda item? Seeing nobody, bring it back to the board, any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, thank you, motion carries 5-0.
Great, that was 2 minutes and 30 seconds, wow. Nice job. Yes, thank you Supervisor Bone for helping us to stay on track. All right, so, boy, we're still very close to the 2:00 hour, and we now have a item from Southern Humboldt Business Improvement District, and it looks like Scott Adair is here to present for this item.
Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to say something first.
Yes, please, Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. So, I'm going to abstain on this vote, pending FPPC recommendations, because there was a certain individual that you all got an email from, and I do not want this to hurt this Improvement District. I don't have a conflict based on that, but I'd like to get the FPPC ruling, so that it doesn't hurt this bid project going forward.
Great, thank you Supervisor Bushnell. Okay, with that, she will abstain and leave the dais, and Scott?
I'm not refusing.
No, I understand, you're just abstaining, yes, thank you for that.
Yes, thank you Chair, Scott Adair, Director of Economic Development for the County of Humboldt. This item before you today is a recommendation for your board to approve an allocation of $25,000, and also staff time to continue to work with Civitas for the completion of the next steps that are necessary in order to move forward the formation process of the Southern Humboldt Business Improvement District. As your board is aware, last year, several Garberville residents and businesses appeared here in chambers before your board to talk about the economic distress and the lack of prosperity in their community, and to ask your board for assistance and support in finding ways to drive economic opportunity for that district and the county. As a result of that communication to your board by business owners and residents, county staff worked with consultants and also with business stakeholders, business owners and residents in the Southern Humboldt area, to identify a number of vehicles or instruments that could be used to bring some additional revenue to the community, that the community could use to drive economic activity. It was determined that the potential formation of an improvement district was likely the best vehicle for that. Your board previously approved staff and a budget allocation to engage with Civitas advisors, who is considered an expert in this field, to conduct a feasibility analysis to gauge the viability of creating an improvement district for this region in the county. That feasibility analysis included stakeholder engagement and discussion with steering committee members made up of business owners and residents from Southern Humboldt. The analysis came back favorable, that the formation of an improvement district would yield a net positive revenue stream for the community, for which the Business Improvement District Board, after formed, which would be comprised of business owners, would be able to make decisions concerning the expenditure of those funds in accord with the management district plan. So if your board were to approve the funding allocation today, and also approve staff time, the next steps would be to complete a draft of that management district plan. The management district plan is essentially the guiding document, or the guiding principles for how the Business Improvement District would operate. That would have to come back to your board for future review and approval. There would also have to be, as required by legislation, a public comment period to follow after that. So there are two opportunities for the public yet to still engage on this issue after today's action. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this item. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for that. Any questions, clarifications from the board? Seeing none, go ahead Supervisor Bone.
And I just, so this will just be on top of the Southern Humboldt visitors and the Chamber of Commerce monies we give them, to, this will be able to start up, so will this be ongoing funding, or will this come out of the visitors' convention bureau, Southern Humboldt, or the, how's that go? I mean, I'm all for it, I just want to know if it's ongoing, or if it's one-time monies?
It's one-time funding. Should the bid be successfully formed, then the bid would repay the general fund allocation. Should the bid fail, then this would just be a one-time general fund allocation.
I, yeah, I can, it needs it, I'd like to let them know that Red Crest and everything else is kind of in Southern Humboldt, too, and don't forget them at all, but that doesn't, so, they're pretty self-sufficient. But yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, and just to be clear, if it is successful, I believe it says in the staff report, that the general fund allocation would be paid back in the second year, which would basically be the first year of revenue, because you put out your bills, and then it takes a year for that revenue to come in, and they would repay that. I think what wasn't clear was it to just pay the $25,000 back, or the whole $50-some-thousand, so if we could have clarification on that. And that's only if it's successful, so, just to clarify.
We would lay that out, and the repayment structure in the management district plan, which would be then created and brought back to your board for review and approval. Our recommendation would be based on the projected income stream that we're seeing out of the feasibility analysis. We think that the bid would be able to pay back the county the full investment for the creation of the bid.
$50-some-thousand apparently.
Correct.
Yeah, great, oh, that's, that's great, because yeah, we have our budget issues, and this is really great to be able to loan this kind of money for a project like this, that absolutely has the potential to really help Southern Humboldt in a big way. So appreciate staff's work on this, with the Southern Humboldt community on there. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate, I mean, this is essentially a no-interest, unsecured loan, and so, which I think, you know, so there's risk involved for us, for sure, and we have to account for that. This only includes Garberville, right? Does this include Redway as well, or is it just within the bounds of Garberville? And would there be expansion potential for, for this to expand to, say, Redway and other places, or is, just checking on that?
Through the analysis, we looked at properties owned in Garberville and in Redway.
Yeah.
The next steps would be a petition drive of businesses who potentially could be included in the improvement district.
I see.
And so we'll be able to vet out through the petition drive, just exactly how large that area can be, and then come back with recommendations. There is always the ability to expand the improvement district, because essentially, this is a self-imposed fee, or an assessment, that the businesses agree to. The businesses actually have an option to pay that assessment directly themselves, or to pass it back on to the consumer. Most businesses pass it back to the consumer. It's very similar to the assessment that you might see for the T-bid. If you were to stay in a hotel, you would see that there would be your tax line, and then a separate line for the assessment fee.
So even Bembo Valley could, could potentially be included? Okay, I appreciate that, I'm, I'm satisfied, thanks.
Yeah, that's great, and you know, I have to say that with the recent funding approved at HCOG for Redwood Drive, which is a project that Tom and Public Works and the Southern Humboldt community have been working on for years, it's now, looks like it's going to get the funding to take it through the final design and permitting work, and then we just need to build it, and that's a significant amount of money, but these things are going to really dovetail nicely, in terms of trying to provide that assistance to Southern Humboldt. So, any other questions from the board, comments? All right, let's go ahead and get public input, and I start with Zoom, and we have 7718 with a hand up. Star 6 unmute, there you go, welcome.
Hello, to start with, I really would like to thank Michelle Bushnell for stepping out of the room, even though probably not justified or perceived potential conflict of interest. Unlike one other individual up there, not mentioning any names, that doesn't seem to happen with that person, so I strongly applaud her doing this. Strongly applaud you putting this forward, I think it's a good investment, even you're rolling the dice, but roll the dice. And I really wish that, you know, some people in other entities would follow your lead on this, especially the city of Blue Lake, maybe Amanda Mager, the city manager who's watching this, would follow what you're doing, setting up an improvement district, rather than having our towns turn into ghost towns. If there's longer-term financing, I again would support something of some type coming out of headwaters, because that's exactly what it was made for, the fund was for, and again, I strongly support this, thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you commenter, and next we have in Zoom, 2613. Star 6 unmute. There you go, welcome.
Hi, thank you, this is Yvonne Hendricks, I'm the Executive Director for the Southern Humboldt Chamber of Commerce. I would just like to read into record our letter of support for this, so I am writing on behalf of the Southern Humboldt Chamber of Commerce to request the approval of $25,000 in funding, with an understanding that, once and if formed, the newly created SHBID will pay back the Civitas fees and formation expenses to the county for the next phase of the Southern Humboldt County Business Improvement District. The next phase, if we can get this funding, could be a critical component. The next phase, if we can get this funding, could be a critical component in the restructuring of Southern Humboldt and restoring our community. The decline of the cannabis industry has had a significant impact on the Southern Humboldt economy, and the establishment of a bid could be a positive step with community input and process towards revitalizing our area. Several other communities in Humboldt County have already formed bids, which have played a crucial role in driving economic growth. The Southern Humboldt County Business Improvement District aims to include businesses located within the areas of Garberville, Redway, and Evergreen. The bid's interest in restructuring these areas aligns with the values of the Chamber in how we support our local businesses. Undoubtedly, the Southern Humboldt County Business Improvement District could have a tangible and positive impact on these areas for current and future businesses and their patrons. We hope through this process with these funds to analyze and evaluate the advantages of establishing a business improvement district in Southern Humboldt County and garner public support and business support. Therefore, we fully endorse and support this measure and urge you to lend the necessary funds to facilitate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's it in the Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today who might like to comment on this item, which is the Southern Humboldt Business Improvement District. And seeing nobody come forward, we'll bring it back up here to the board and seek a motion or any discussion. Anybody like to make a motion? Supervisor Arroyo?
Home of approval of staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Arroyo and second by Supervisor Wilson, any further discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and do our voting.
Thank you, motion carries four to zero.
Four, zero, one.
Four, zero, one, sorry.
Thank you for that, and thank you Scott and everybody, yes, it's a wonderful thing to be helping around the county. All right, we do, as I projected, have time now before our next time set, which is at three o'clock. So we're going to go ahead and go back to agenda items, I believe we have one more item on our regular agenda, and that is the public hearing for the purchase of real property located at 3007 I Street and 3015 I Street, Eureka, California. And do we need to read this into the record? No, okay, but we do need to open the public hearing, I'll do that now. And are there any clarifying, is there a presentation, Tom?
Yes, I have a very short presentation, Nikki can throw it up on the screen. So again, this is the proposed property acquisition on I Street for our Public Health Department? Okay. Yeah. So just briefly, what I'll go over is the property overview and the process, the development options, our facility master plan compliance, and public input. Next screen please. So as you can see, it's directly across the street from our public health facility as it exists today. It's centrally located, we've had good negotiations with the property owner and good support from the board for acquiring this law, it's centrally located. Next slide please. So the process remaining is to hear public input today, then execute a purchase agreement, finalize our SEQA determination, return to the board for the adoption of SEQA determination and finalize resolution to purchase, and then close escrow, final payments, and transfer of ownership. The sites are being pursued exclusively for the development of a new public health laboratory. Upon acquisition, the two properties will be combined into one parcel. Preliminary programming efforts estimate the need for a two-story building of approximately 7,000 to 10,000 square feet. The City of Eureka has already found that the proposed public health laboratory is in conformance with the city's 2040 general plan. There is a small residential structure on site that will be baited for hazardous materials and demolished, and future site development is subject to board approval and SEQA. The current master plan was adopted in 2020. This property is strategically valuable to the county in support of colocating services for enhanced efficiency and access by the public, and in general, we are finding widespread support for our DHHS projects. And that concludes my staff report.
Very concise, thank you Director Mattson. Any clarifying questions from the board at this point? Supervisor Bone?
I appreciate the RF report in there, I just didn't want any surprises later on.
Yes, we, we made sure to include that because we knew that could come up as a major, major issue if not covered.
And then the other thing is, is I don't know how much asbestos is in it, but you may also want to look at the fire department for a fire training burn, because, I mean, considering their training thing is two blocks away, so.
We've made that offer on other county properties as well, so I assume we'll do the same with this one first, so we don't have to pay.
Easier to pick up charcoal than a whole building, huh? All right, any other questions? All right, let's go to public comment, and I see one hand up in Zoom, and that is 7718. Welcome.
Ken Swatsky, I strongly support this kind of project. To centralize your facilities in this one area around the courthouse, in my opinion, is imperative, and if Tom's happy with the project, Tom Mattson's happy with it, I'm happy with it. I totally trust his judgment on these kind of things. I don't know when you construct these things, if you actually build foundations where you could, and design these projects where you can go up higher. I don't normally support some places, what, seven-story buildings, but this is an area that might support that, if anyone would in Humboldt County, and so please move forward with this acquisition. And some other good things I hear, there's some other repurposing of some lots and some things that I've spoken to Supervisor Madron about, and I strongly support all those kind of projects that you speak.
Thank you commenter, and just to be clear, this is property across from our Wood Street property, not across from the courthouse, although we do own both blocks, so just to clarify, but thank you for your comments. Nobody else in Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today. Anybody care to comment on this project?
Do you want to comment on this project?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, we have one.
Oh, yeah, no problem, take your time, we're good. Thanks for helping, and you know, you can just go to the mic there at the table. Go to the mic at the table, that'll be easier, right there, right, right in front of you, right there.
Sorry.
No, no worries.
I'm, I'm a little, okay, I'm, I'm a little confused. Okay, my name is Phyllis Coy, I'm the President of Humboldt County of Rex Bones District, and I'm a little confused. I understand, okay, wait, has this been passed to make this purchase? I'm having a difficult time hearing, so.
We're considering that today.
Has it been?
Not yet, we're asking you for your input on it.
Okay, then after, after you take action on it, there's a, there's a resolution that I would like to present to the board.
So you have some thoughts, why don't you share those with us right now, please?
I'm sorry, what's he, I can't hear what you're saying.
Share with us right now.
You want to read the resolution now?
Oh, okay.
Or do you want to go ahead and make your comments first?
I can read it now.
Are you going to ask about Eric Colombeck?
Well, that's going to be in here, that'll be in the comments.
Okay, so are you set?
Yep, I'm set. Okay.
Okay.
Whereas on this 28th day of November 2023, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors has considered the purchase of two lots on I Street. And whereas there is a structure on one of these lots that appears to have been built in the last century, and whereas this structure will most likely be demolished, and whereas there may be salvageable items within this structure, and whereas there is at least one business in Humboldt County that may be able to use these salvageable items, therefore be it resolved that the structure be granted a stay of demolition by the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors until it can be determined if there are salvageable items within this structure. Please consider this resolution before any demolition is granted. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for that, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And it's going to be quite a few steps that we have to go through before we get to the point of demolition. And my assumption, and I'll seek Director Mattson's input on this, is that if there is salvageable and it works out, we would probably consider that as one of the options, is that correct?
If it's salvageable and works out, yes, we would look for, you know, certain items that we would want to retain, like old-growth redwood and things like that.
So both the salvageable issue, the potential burn issue for training, these are things that will be considered in the process, so please share that with your friend. Okay, great, thank you Director, Supervisor Bone.
Phyllis, Phyllis Rex. Phyllis, was there something in the house that you wanted?
No, what she's concerned with is, like you said, the old-growth redwood.
Yeah, okay.
They're falling back, because there's a, there's a thing before the city council about.
I understand, okay. I was just making.
Yeah, with redwood shingles for, for a window, et cetera.
Phyllis and her sisters have lived everywhere, so I thought maybe they, you know.
They are Humboldt Honeys.
Yes, you are, thank you.
The originals. That's great. Okay, any other public comment at this point? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, but we'll come back to the board for discussion and deliberation. Supervisor Wilson?
I'd make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Wilson, second by Supervisor Bushnell, any further discussion?
If I may speak to this, this is, I'm glad we're doing this, and this is just moving forward with our facilities master planning process, and so, yes, more of this, please.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Thank you, motion carries.
Motion carries five, zero.
Great, thank you very much, thank you Director Mattson.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we have 35 minutes before our next time set, so do we want to do closed session and at least accomplish what we can, but come back timely for three o'clock? Okay, so that's what we're going to do, we're going to recess, we'll be back here at three o'clock for a time set on the cannabis item, but before we do that, we need to read into the record the closed session items and take public comment, so County Council?
Thank you Chair Madron. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6 in order to review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of Mercer Frazier Company versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2201537. Finally, it is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957 in order to consider the public employee performance evaluation for the position of the county administrative officer.
Great, thank you very much for that, and now we'll take public comment. We have one hand up in Zoom, and that is 7718. Star six to unmute, welcome.
Hello, Ken Swatsky again from Mexico. I think the labor negotiation thing is reflecting what happened today with the, with some of the in-home healthcare workers, that's great, I'm very happy about this finally coming fruition. It's about time. I'm just curious why Mercer Frazier is suing the county, I guess I'll try and find that court case and check into that one. I think Jeff has got plenty of money, I don't know why he needs to sue the county, but anyway. Then of course we have the consider a public employee performance evaluation. I have had communication with Alicia Hayes, she does get back to me, I appreciate that. And so, I just, I just always, always wish to look at what kind of quality we have in this kind of position, and returning phone calls and communicating is a major asset that she has. I'm hoping that what some people feel is incorrect, and that some people like to, I don't know, I have a pet peeve with people who wish to make themselves look bigger by other people looking smaller, or people in power positions trying to eliminate other positions to, to add to their own, it's kind of a power thing. Anyway, I strongly support you going forward and, and listen to what the concerns of many people are in making a decision. I hope Alicia has, is doing a job, which I'm more supportive now than I was a couple weeks ago, so thank you enough, can you speak?
Thank you commenter, and there's nobody else in Zoom. Anybody here in the audience today who would like to speak to us on our closed session items?
Just, just so you'll know, Phyllis Coy.
You'll need to come up if you want to address this, I'm sorry Holly. Is it on the closed session item?
No, it's on what just happened.
Okay, well, we're done with that item Holly.
Okay, well, they're my sisters, both of them.
Oh, wonderful.
And they are not Humboldt Honeys.
Let the record reflect. All right, we are in recess, we will be back here at three o'clock, so take a quick break, but let's meet up in Room A and deal with, right now. Go in there right now with a break if you need it on the way. Welcome back, we are out of recess and reconvening as the Board of Supervisors, and we have a time set for three o'clock, we're just a few minutes after that. So thank you everybody for your hard work today to be efficient and concise, and this particular item is listed as measure, measure for the March ballot to address cannabis permitting, I believe we have a presentation by Director Ford.
Thank you Chair Madron, members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford with the Planning and Building Department to present changes to a possible ordinance amendment modifying the commercial cannabis land use ordinance by referendum. At the meeting of November 5th, the board considered a possible ordinance and gave direction to make some changes to that, to address certain things. One of those was an alternative to the cap that was presented, to look at requiring a four-fifths vote to modify the cap, to require noticing of permits over a certain size, to make sure that ancillary uses and primary uses are not made non-conforming by anything that the ordinance would do, to work on a definition of parcel, to avoid abuse of combining multiple parcels to avoid the intent of the ordinance, and then to include provisions for public, for the public to require that the board consider issues related to water use and energy use. One of the things that the, the board also expressed concern about was the actual title of the referendum did not seem to address all of the items that were being addressed in the ordinance, and so the title has been modified to itemize everything that's proposed within the ordinance, and it has also, it's also, an attempt has been made to get it down to 75 words, which is a challenge. In terms of the cap on the permits and acreage, this chart has been prepared to show the existing cap and to show the number of permits and acreage to date, the applications, the total of, of all permits and applications, and then what a 60% reduction to the cap would look like, and what a cap would look like if it consisted of all of the permits, all of the existing applications, plus 10%. So as a board is well aware and for the public's benefit, the current cap is 3,500 permits and 1,205 acres spread across the 12 watersheds. Currently, we have issued 1,113 cultivation permits for 370, basically 371 acres. If we add in the permits and all that existing applications together, there are 1,578 total applications for a total of about 617 acres. So a 60% reduction would take the number of allowed permits to 1,400 and the number of allowed acres to 480, which you can see would be less than what's currently permitted and proposed, and that would also affect many of the watersheds. If we were to use a cap as an alternative that was discussed at the last meeting to include all the permits, plus all the applications, plus 10%, that would be more than the combination of all applications and permits together, and it would also be more than the current acreage that is permitted and proposed. and it would also be more than the current acreage that is permitted and proposed. So, the choice or the, kind of the, one of the decision points before the board today, if you choose to go ahead with this, is to choose between what was originally recommended, which was basically a sixty percent reduction, which would be one thousand four hundred permits or four hundred and eighty acres, or the alternative would be one thousand seven hundred and thirty-six permits, six hundred and seventy-eight acres, which equates to about a forty-nine point six percent reduction, so it's very close to a fifty percent reduction in permits and acreage. The language was also modified. The Board had asked that we explored allowing an increase to the cap and the acreage, the number of permits and the acreage, using a four-fifths vote. One of the, the, the previous finding was that the Board needed to find that, based upon studies that were done, recommendations by state agencies, that there would not be a detrimental impact to the watersheds. So, we looked at adding a four-fifths vote to that, and one of the things that became apparent is that if you just say four fifths, you could have three supervisors present, and three supervisors could then vote to amend the ordinance. And so, we modified it to require that at least four supervisors vote in the affirmative to make sure that it truly is reflective of at least four of the supervisors taking that action. It's a little bit different from what the Board asked for last time, but we believe that that fulfills the intent, desire of the Board. Relative to public notice, the Board asked us to take a look at making sure that applications no longer go through without any kind of a public notice. Currently, on parcels of five acres or more, a, up to five thousand square feet can be approved with the zoning clearance certificate. A zoning clearance certificate is a ministerial permit, requires no public notice. On parcels between five and ten acres, currently, that can, you can get up to ten thousand square feet with a special permit. For parcels over ten acres, currently, you can get ten thousand square feet with a zoning clearance certificate, and you can get up to an acre with a special permit. What we've done in the modification that's been presented to you today is to say that the small cultivator regulations would remain exactly the same, no change, no notice would be done with a zoning clearance certificate. Anything above that would require a special permit. So, on parcels from five to ten acres, you could get up to ten thousand square feet with a special permit, and then on parcels over ten acres, you could get up to an acre with a special permit. And a special permit would, is a discretionary action that requires public notice. The other concern with respect to not creating things, or creating a situation where permits or activities, uses become non-conforming, is this paragraph is entirely new, so this would be a completely new section to the ordinance. We added language to it to say that, you know, this really applies to applications not already on file with the Planning and Building Department, and then permits issued as to applications filed on or before December fifth, twenty twenty-three for over one acre, any cultivation are hereby deemed legal and conforming permits. I'm gonna come back to this in a few minutes. There's a public comment on this that we want to address. But this was added for the specific purpose of ensuring that we don't create any non-conformities with respect to existing issued permits. The other request was to look at the definition of the parcel and make sure that people aren't putting together patent parcels or other parcels and, and putting an acre on a parcel here, an acre on a parcel there, and so to look at that definition and see if we can't find a way to kind of close that loophole. One of the struggles with using parcel is that parcel is a commonly used term throughout the zoning ordinance. It has a lot of different applications, so to redefine parcel could be problematic. So, what we looked at doing was redefining cultivation sites currently defined in the CCLUO. We looked at redefining that, and that is embedded in that section I just showed you a moment ago, and so that it's, refers to a cultivation site, and then the definition of a cultivation site would be the parcel or contiguous parcels of a property owner or an entity owned by, or a property owned by an entity and, and that has the same owner. So, trying to really just focus on cultivation site as being the way to limit that potential loophole. There was also a, a request to address the water and energy use, and this was embedded in the first part of the ordinance in Section Two, where the public is directing the Board of Supervisors to develop water use criteria for sustainable use of ground and surface water resources, and to develop mandates for renewable energy. So, that was put in under Section Two. It's not included within the ordinance language because it's not ordinance language yet. It's not something that the public has acted on. We did get some public comments, and one of the first is from Kent Swawwski, who was asking about whether or not the CMN L U O and the CCLUO are consistent with the general plan. In both cases, when we adopted those, we adopted findings of consistency, that those ordinances are consistent with the general plan, and we will be, oops, sorry, coming back to the Board of Supervisors, if the Board chooses to go ahead with this, with findings for consistency with the general plan with this particular amendment, and, and so that will be addressed. Mark Thurman also questioned the Board, whether the public could give the Board direction on energy and water. It is in the ordinance. The concern is that it's not in the ordinance. It is actually in the ordinance. Section Two is actually a portion of the ordinance. And there's a comment about the non-conforming permits versus non-conforming uses, and in, in reading the comment, we agree. For clarity, we need to modify that to say non-conforming use rather than non-conforming permit, so subject to the Board's direction, if we bring something back, we would recommend that you direct us to make that change and bring it back with a reference to non-conforming uses. And then there was a, a comment we don't completely understand relative to how it's not consistent with the general plan, and you need to do a general plan amendment, and the general plan doesn't address, isn't intended to, nor is it required to, address every use that's allowed within the county. That really is the job of the zoning ordinance. That's where this is. The general plan does address agricultural uses. It does address TPZ. It addresses all the types of uses that are addressed, are required to be addressed within the general plan. We also received a public comment from the HCGA, and the comment was that most of the ordinance amendments cannot be changed by vote of the Board, and that is true. The only one that is proposed to be changed by vote of the Board is to the, the size of the cap. And then there was some comments expressing concern about the reduction in the cap prohibits expansion of small farms. That could be true. One of the decision points for the Board really is whether to adopt a sixty percent reduction in the cap or, or go to the slightly larger fifty percent reduction, which would allow room to approve all of the permits that are currently on file and have some room for additional permits and expansions to be approved. The, the sixty percent reduction is reliant upon some amount of attrition going on, and, and so that is a decision point for the Board. They bring up that the reference to water and energy provisions reduce risk litigation, and yep, that, that's always true. Everything that the Board does has a risk of litigation. They express concern that a modification to require special permits increases cost to the small farmers, and, and they're, the special permits do cost a little bit more because we hold public hearings. There's a, probably about a thousand dollars difference in cost in terms of what needs to be done, so that, that is a legitimate comment. Then they made a comment to remove the cap exemption in MG zone property, and that really only applies in the coastal zone. And what, the reason that was included was at the time that CCLUO was done, we're trying to encourage redevelopment of industrial sites and identifying that the MG zone property on the Samoa Peninsula largely has water to it, and it uses municipal water. It's not reliant upon groundwater or other natural water sources. So, the Board's decision points today really are, and after you review the changes to the ordinance, have we captured the Board's direction, desires in that? There's an alternative to be chosen relative to the cap in terms of the number of permits that can be issued and the acreage. And relative to the noticing requirements, it was a little bit unclear whether the Board wanted that to be effective immediately, so once this becomes effective, which I believe would be ten days after the election, are we processing special permits for things that may otherwise require a ZCC currently, or does that only apply to new applications, and then are there other changes the Board would like to see? And then, just briefly, next steps is that if the Board is satisfied with this, wants to proceed with this, continue this to the meeting of December fifth, twenty twenty-three, we'll bring back the appropriate changes. We'll prepare a resolution reflecting the action of the Board and putting it on the agenda. Also, a resolution of consistency with the general plan. There'll also be an addendum to identify compliance with SEQA, and then after the Board, if the Board chooses to take action on that in the affirmative, it would be submitted to the registrar. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the Board? Yes, Supervisor Wilson, then Arroyo.
With relationship to the special permit provision, which I think is the noticing part of this, right? And you said some, I think what you said is it, anything over ten thousand square feet? But I thought we had talked about anything over two thousand square feet. So, what's happening in the in-between the two thousand square feet and the ten thousand square feet?
Anything over two thousand square feet
Oh, two thousand.
would require a special permit.
Thanks for the clarification. That's what I thought. It's just not what I heard here, but who knows about that? And then, I think I had, are, are there, are there folks that are in sort of the process of permitting now that maybe getting, you know, more information about their sites or whatever it would be, that could be impacted in terms of these caps? And what you're saying is that's possible, but then attrition would take, would, would potentially mitigate for that, assuming that not everybody has a permit that's gonna be hanging around for a long time?
Correct. That was the rationale for the sixty percent reduction. And, and the, the, I guess the policy issue is whether or not it's a, a good policy to rely on attrition to allow people to, to, to move forward that are serious about moving forward.
And when there was the, the question around litigate, potential litigation for sort of the direction being given around water and energy, can you formulate what you think that might, what, who that would be and why they would do that? Would it be like an environmental group, or how, how would that be? And would it be, could we take care of it by, by putting a date on that, like a date certain to have, you know, say like within one year, we will have updated, you know?
It, it could be. I, I think the bigger concern is that it doesn't say what that's gonna be normally when you do a referendum like this. It, it, it is something that is legislative in intent, that it, it actually adopts an ordinance or modifies an ordinance. And so, this reference is just kind of directing the Board to go and do something without identifying what that is.
I, I hear you. I mean, we see this in legislation, though. Often, it, it has intent without actually giving a threshold of outcome.
Yeah.
So, um, okay, those are my initial questions.
Supervisor Arroyo.
I just have one initial question, which is to clarify, if you would, what your response was about that comment regarding non-conforming permits versus non-conforming uses. You said there was a, that was like a good catch essentially with the language. What, what would you recommend instead?
So, I, I don't have specific language. I want to give it some thought. I, I mean, ideally, it's just substituting uses for permits. But when you, when you change the first word that referenced the permit to use, it doesn't work as well. So, it needs some other fussing, but it's, it's basically the, the same. Sorry, that was a really technical statement, huh?
I really liked it. Required some fussing.
It, it just requires some rewarding in there.
Sure, sure, okay. But that, the idea is that, that it would be rewarded such that there's more clarity around that?
It's clarity to be consistent with a non-conforming use, yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell.
My first question is, can all of this be done without it going to a ballot measure?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then my second question would be, with the ten thousand square feet, the two thousand and above noticing, can that, through a ZCC, can it be done that the public would be notified without it, and then still have it be a ZCC because of the cost issue for small farmers?
Well, the, the cost of the public hearing is the cost of the notice.
Yeah, I'm not asking about the public. So, one of the, the issues that I hear is that you don't, the public, surrounding public neighbors don't even get any notice.
Right.
So, if we were to, or if you were to say, hey, there's a ten thousand square feet going in Garberville Central, whatever, here's your public notice, and they, wouldn't they have an opportunity to comment then and could comment through the ZCC?
The struggle is that they could comment, but if it basically complied, it doesn't matter what the public comment is. So, by giving the public the ability to comment on something that their input doesn't matter, doesn't need to be considered, that's kind of a false promise.
So, you, so those permits are just granted as long as it has every?
As long as it complies with everything in the ordinance, they're granted. And oftentimes, we get pushback from the public on them.
I've, I've heard it.
And, and, but the fact of the matter is, if they're ministerial, and they're treated as being ministerial, we can't tell the applicant that they can't do something that they're entitled to do if they meet the requirements of the ordinance.
So, the conditions come from the Planning Commission, whether it's in the ordinance or not, sometimes?
Well, the special per, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Those are my questions for right now.
Any other questions from the Board? Seeing, seeing none? You have another one? Go for it.
So, additionally, there's been questions about the IP permits and how that looks in the future, and I know that notices went out a couple of weeks ago. I think there's a hundred and thirteen IPs or some, somewhere around there. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, notices went out that you're not gonna, those, some IPs aren't going to be reissued. I think forty of them are going to be automatically reissued. And also, comments have been around the IPs not having any inspection from the county, but they are getting inspected from the state. Is that true?
Yes.
And so, is there a process that the IPs could be inspected? And also, what does it look like for those other IPs that aren't going to be reinstated? And this is a question we had previously when we had these discussions. And this comment's coming from, you know, constituents in my district, so if you could answer those?
Sure. So, the short answer is yes, we can inspect IPs. We just haven't done it before because there's not a permit to inspect it against. But one of the things that we can do, and we do right now, is we track things year by year to watch what the progress is on a site, if they change, and and the changes have slowed down a lot. I mean, when we first started this process, interim permits would, would change. It was quite common. That, that's not quite the same as it used to be. So, we, we can inspect them. We can go out and inspect them. For those that are not being extended, what we've done in the letter that we've sent out is we've identified the things that they have not done in order to maintain their IP. And the intent of that is that if they are choosing to want to keep their IP, they can bring that into compliance before December thirty-first. And so if they do everything they need to do by December 31st, we will extend the IP. If, if they don't extend the IP, if they don't meet the requirements of what they need to do to extend the IP, then the IP is not valid. We will notify the state of that. Some of the reasons the IP is not being extended is because they don't have a state license. And, and so we'll notify the state that they, they no longer have a local permit, that they're no longer entitled to have a state license. And then we will notify them of the things that they need to do to be in compliance with the site while they work towards getting a permit. Some of that may be to disassemble some of the things, or at least take the tops off the greenhouses, so that it's clear that they're not cultivating.
Okay, those are just my questions for now, thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Supervisor Royal.
Thank you. I just have a bit of an observation about how we got here. And then, you know, I'm, it's not really a question. You know, before we hear public comment, I'm interested in saying this out loud and then hearing from folks, you know, about, about how we should proceed. So how we got here, you know, I certainly, after we had our discussions with the HCRi proponents in our ad hoc, you know, we sort of ended and reported back here, ended that process saying, okay, well, it doesn't seem like we've necessarily come up with a path forward that we can both agree on, so let's see how it goes and come back and do the work around amending, amending the general plan, et cetera, if, if it passes and, you know, we'll, we'll sort of agree to part ways and then reconvene if, if and when we need to. And, and there was an acknowledgement that staff has an enormous amount of work on their plate in the Planning and Building Department. And because of the uncertainty and the, you know, fairly soon election, that are, you know, that we would come back after that. And then, you know, I can, I can understand how we got here where we're considering this today. That said, once we kind of initiate a process of going, you know, hey, public, we're thinking about this and now we're going to, you know, receive input from a variety of perspectives, we are here now having received input from a wide variety of perspectives. And I, I, I think it's very abundantly clear to me, at least from the communications I've received before this meeting, that there are at least a few camps of folks who are very, who, who do not feel that this is headed in the right direction or don't feel like it's addressing the needs. That said, after receiving all the input that, you know, we receive when these things get on our agenda, this is, this is kind of where we are. So I appreciate the work staff have put into it. I appreciate that, you know, this was sort of an 11th hour attempt to put something together that could be an alternative that addresses many folks' concerns. But I also wanted to acknowledge that, you know, up until a month and a half ago, you know, my expectation, and I believe, you know, most of our board's expectation, was that we were going to see how it went in March and then adjust accordingly. So anyway, we're, we're all here kind of trying to cobble something together from the input we've received, which is all over the map. And it's not the ideal way to do things, but, but it's, it's where we are at this kind of second to last meeting before we have to be, you know, have done a, made a decision about whether or not we're gonna have something on the March ballot. So with that, I mean, I'm interested to hear public comment. I, I appreciate the work staff have done and I, I don't, you know, I think it's, it's worth saying that we can always go, you know what, we don't need to put anything else on the ballot. It's still an option for us to do that. Because maybe we, you know, because it's, it's clear to me that the CCLUO needs work beyond this and that the planning, you know, typically would go through the process of kicking it to the Planning Commission or not kicking it to, asking the Planning Commission to consider going through that kind of robust and lengthy process. And then it would, you know, ultimately come to us. This is, this is an alternative that, you know, presents some challenges. So anyway, that said, you know, I enter into this thinking my preference would be to go through that more robust and lengthy process after March. But if we still feel like now is an imperative time to get something on the ballot as a board, then I'm, I'm okay with that. I just, I don't really love how we got here and, and it's frustrating to be in this, in this position because it's, we have so little time.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Supervisor Wilson?
I would just address that, that part of the issue is that Measure A passes, there's not a lot of work to be done. So then we're, yeah, I'm just saying, like that, that leaves us in a place that's a very different landscape, that, that's kind of the point. I think this truncated process, at least we're having a public discussion, although not through the Planning Commission as we would have, had liked. But this was because we were, as far as I understand, the negotiation around doing a more public process was not something that was availed to us. So this is not perfect by any means. But it, but at least it has some public process associated with it, so.
Okay, Supervisor Baum.
Well, with what you said there, I think it kind of puts us in a perspective that we should probably do everything in our powers to make sure Measure A doesn't pass. Because my issue with it, and I'm just gonna go ahead and say it, I don't have any, I'm not getting any correspondence from anybody that, I'm not getting correspondence from anybody saying this is the greatest thing, says butter popcorn, except for Mark and, and Betsy. So I, I, I look at this and I, I wonder, you know, I was at the meeting, you were at the original meeting and things like that. The system worked, we're changing this as it goes. Back in 2016, 2012, 13, 14, 15, when we were trying to, there's a lot of stones being thrown, I wouldn't have done that, I wouldn't have done that. You don't know what the hell you would have done till it actually, till you were sitting up here. It's easier to, to backstage quarterback and everything else, and there were five of us up here. But with that be said, with that being said, we are trying to fix what we did. And I know that a ballot measure is not the way to do it. And I would, I, I was looking at your, the alternatives up there, and I'm thinking, well, I'd take 50%. I'm going, God, what, you know? But you gotta remember, 10 years ago at this time, we had 15,000 grows, they said. Now they say we have 2,500. So, and I don't see a lot of growth, but I think we should leave the opportunity there for people to come into the business if they want to, or, you know, to have some sort of vision of their businesses rather than not giving them any vision at all.
Okay, any other comments from the board? So let's go ahead and get public comment, and I've got two hands up in Zoom. If you're in Zoom and you're watching the video with audio on, we have a delay of a half minute to a minute, so you might want to turn that audio off so you know if you're called upon. And if you want to speak, raise your hand by doing star nine, and I see a couple more hands coming up. So we'll start out with 7718, and you're already unmuted, welcome.
Thank you for my opportunity to speak, Kent Spalatapie. I've watched this process for a long time. The, the situation you're into right now is that you're being asked to put something on the ballot to go to the voters. I strongly support you moving forward and everything John, John went ahead and said to do, strongly support you, go ahead and do that, just go ahead and do it. You don't have to take this to the voters. Voters did not vote on either 1.0 or 2.0. We did not vote on the general plan. So I don't, I don't understand why we're going to, to the voters right now. If you're not happy with the initiative that passes in March, if it passes, you, you have total power to go ahead and put an initiative on in November that totally unwinds it, without going to the voters, without getting 7,000 signatures, without doing anything. That's within your power and, and, and that's the power that's been given to you, right, wrong, or whatever. But I, I just don't see any reason for this particular small changes that be proposed to go to the voters. That's, that's your job, is to go ahead and make those changes and a bunch of other ones, hopefully, that you will make between now and November. And I think, I think it's just best to let the initiative ride out. Actually, I did not comment to you as far as my comments go, but I did to, to other supervisors. And the reason I didn't is because I think you have a conflict of interest in participating in this conversation, that aside. So I, I strongly recommend that the rest of you just go ahead and, making arms for the last minute never does any good. I'm so glad you're relaxed now and can make a decision. And I look forward to hopefully doing the decision to let this go to the voters, let the Humboldt County Growers Association lobby, whatever they want to do, make their case. And, and then, and then if you feel that what the result has been correct, then next of effort, it's unwinding, that's totally.
Thank you, commenter. And next we have 8801, star six to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hey, I would just like to say a few things. I have lived in Neyland just as long as the proponents, and I would like to ask the board not to make any decisions based on pressure they feel from the few proponents who have been misleadingly presenting themselves as voices of 7,000 signatures that they've gathered. As a close neighbor, what I've seen and heard are mostly Betsy and Mark's family and close friends speak in support of Measure A and then not disclose who they are, leaving you to think there are many more concerned community members than there actually are. And even those people seem genuinely confused about what Measure A will do. One spoke before you in June shouting in supportive initiatives about how we farmers need, quote, retail on the farm, which is obviously not something allowed under Measure A and would be the exact opposite since we can't even get a microbusiness if it passes. But I do know is that my rural neighbors who are ranchers are not worried about their livestock that would be harmed if they speak out against us, as the proponents have claimed. They're worried what will happen to the neighborhood if we leave, as we have proven ourselves to be good and helpful neighbors. They certainly don't consider us undesirable. The Neyland I live in is mortified to be neighbors with people who would talk about the white people in Neyland, as Betsy said recently. And what I'm saying is collectively, we have discussed and changed the structure of cannabis in Humboldt County right here at the Board of Supervisors meetings over the last six years. And those discussions have led to positive supportive changes. We should continue to do so and not put a rushed opposing measure on the ballot. There's no real need and we have better ways to have real discussions and make real changes right here in this office. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. And next we have 7108.
Good afternoon. I have a couple things to say. First of all, when March comes around in ballot nature, people will be looking at that as opposed to what's the current process with the county. And for all those people that sign those initiatives, it seems like there needs to be some updates and some changes to the ordinance. And the first thing, which I totally agree with, is know that the neighbors with plants for over, for two, over 2,000 square feet, I think that's really essential. I had some questions about the numbers for the, on, which is attachment one. I come up with 465 applications. So there is permits and then there's applications. So we're counting on all those applications being fulfilled, but then we're saying, no, there's, you know, so many of them are gonna be canceled.
30 seconds.
So I just feel like, okay. The other thing, it says a cap at an acre and then you have on, where it says that it could be up to eight acres. That's on page, page 5, 55.4, 0.6, 0.1, 0.2, 0.4.
Thank you, commenter. And next we have 3849, star six to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Polly Kinzinger and I am a cultivator. I am an active member of HCGA and I agree with the letter submitted by HCGA in regard to this topic if it were to continue to move forward. However, I do not agree with a second ballot measure. It feels like it's a knee jerk reaction to the HCRi, now called Measure A. You already have an ordinance in place that can accomplish the same things you're talking about in this competing measure. I find the competing measure to be confusing and I feel as if it goes to a ballot, people are gonna be like, well, which one is which? Which one is which? What am I supposed to vote yes or no to? I don't, it's confusing. So I just also in closing, I want to say I thank you for this robust conversation and look forward to how we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And next we have 7713. Welcome.
Thank you. Brian Roberts from Bloxbury. First, I'd like to thank John for getting us to this process. It's been a long seven years to even get us through the system. We're here today because 56% of the cities and counties still do not have cannabis regulated within their borders, which means Humboldt County is struggling. Garberville is now in the top five for foreclosures. We all know cannabis is moving forward. National legalization, potentially international legalization may happen within the next five to 10 years. And if we put a cap on the amount of grows in Humboldt County, we're shutting the door on the future. We're shutting the door for new families to come up and for Humboldt County to be represented worldwide. 1,500 farms is nothing. If you look at Napa County, same population as Humboldt County, but Napa County is in the top 10 for wealth of our state. Humboldt County is in the bottom 10 for wealth in our state. The reason for that is they have over 45,000 acres of wine growing. We have minimum compared to that, almost none. If water is our main thing, require ponds, stop digging wells, have ponds built for these people, make them have storage. I am a cultivator. It took me six years to get permitted. Problem, my problem was, when I drove down Highway 36, I saw a brand new one acre get permitted in January of 2018. I called the next day to check on my status and I was billed $20 for calling in, but yet I didn't get a planner assigned to my thing. Another one was a two acre grow, which was permitted in 2018, still prior to me even being assigned a planner. So we're here today because of what happened. New cultivation got sent through the system really quick when us legacies struggled. So that is the problem why most people have an issue today. But if we cap the size of cultivation, we're shooting the future of Humboldt County and destroying it. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you, commenter. You nailed that at two minutes. That's all the hands up we have in Zoom at this point, so I will close out. Oh, I got one last one, end of the wire, and that is 4797. And again, if you're in Zoom, don't be listening to the audio, there is a delay there. So 4797, here's your opportunity.
Thank you. Hi, good afternoon. This is Melanie McFavre, owner of Humboldt County Farming Commissioner. And I have a couple of questions. I'll start with the first one, which is, having done polling, do you determine whether the Humboldt County taxpayers can donate to the general fund if there's a countermeasure? And then my second one, more importantly, is when will tribal consultation take place? So as many are aware, growers look for the same sites that tribal people used to look for, which are open metals, open forests, flat ground, near water source, near a road or tribal trail in the past. And so if you take a look at a map, comparative map, you'll see that a lot of places are indeed the same. There are a lot of tribal cultural resources located in these areas. And so aside from SBAEP, another whole thing that's going to be some tribal consultation, I would hate to be arrested in the region with the largest density of tribes in North America and not be consulting with tribes over what is largely a watershed issue, when watershed issues are at the top, the top of the list for all tribal nations here. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. Okay, that is all of the hands up in Zoom, so I'll close that off. And we'll go to those here in the audience today that would like to speak on this agenda item. Please come forward and line up over at the wall if you can, please, so we can be efficient with our time. so we can be efficient with our time. And so please come forward. Welcome. You've got two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Gordon Clatworthy. I'm running for first district supervisor. I've been to the Measure A debate that was in Arcata. I just went to the court case that was up on the second floor there. We don't need to put anything on the ballot. Just get people to vote no on Measure A. This is a ridiculous waste of everybody's time, and we're going to be hurried, and we're not going to do it right. Just put it off. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And next.
Good afternoon, Board, and thank you for this opportunity to comment. I'm Andy Riggs, and I have a small 2,900 square foot cannabis garden, which I took over from my dad, Patrick Riggs, after his passing in 2019. Making the decision to take over my dad's little farm was an easy one, as was the decision to divest myself from larger cultivation operations. I made these decisions based upon promises from my county government, my state government, and the existing laws and regulations. I have made strategic decisions to scale my business and adapt as the market changes and evolves, perhaps putting in a nursery, a micro business license, or even expanding my cultivation size. Measure A would obviously severely hamper my ability to make these changes, and it also appears that the proposed alternative Measure B could as well. I ask that we do not shut the door of opportunity for myself and the smallest of farmers. To this point, I also have concerns of the proposed requirement of obtaining a special permit for farms over 2,000 square feet. This is a hardship for some of our smallest cultivators who we should be propping up, not furthering the closing of the door of opportunity. I also have concerns that the hamstringing of the ability of the board to amend Measure, this proposed Measure B, is short sighted. The board needs the ability to also adapt to the evolving markets and to make the appropriate changes as needed. I ask you, as the board, please do not hastily develop and approve an alternative measure that may perpetuate the harm identified in Measure B.
Thirty seconds.
This is a time to be deliberate and thoughtful and to not make mistakes that will haunt us. I'm sure all of you, as well as I, want this in our rearview mirror and to do what we do best. I thank you all for your diligence and your service and for your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Johnny Cassali. I'm with Huckleberry Hill Farms, a 5,000 square foot cannabis farm. Been on that property for 50 years. I'm opposed to putting any kind of other initiative on the ballot at this time. Sounds to me, after going to court today, that maybe we're going to get a ruling on Measure A here next week, early next week, hopefully, and maybe make a decision after that. Hope I didn't misspeak. But yeah, and also, if you did put an initiative on the ballot, I think it would be sending a conflicting message to the voters that maybe these proponents have something, and maybe that the ordinance that we have now is flawed. But in defense of Mr. Ford and what we're all trying to accomplish here, this industry is ever changing, and you can't have anything permanent. Like, putting any kind of restrictions on small farmers, even in sensitive watersheds, is really a death sentence to many of us. I mean, the only thing that's really kept my farm alive today is being able to incorporate a nursery license onto my farm, which really consists of five marijuana plants, 25 square feet each. We're talking about 125 square feet. That enables me to sell seeds to a commercial industry, to the retailers, and it's really enabled me to increase a little bit of income to my farm.
Thirty seconds.
And so restrict, putting any kind of restrictions on our small farms right now is really a death sentence. And I'd rather roll the dice on Measure A. I believe the voters will do the right things. And if they don't, it's really going to be devastating to the whole industry in a whole. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen.
Thank you very much. And next.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Ross Gordon with Humboldt County Growers Alliance. Agree with many of the things which have been said so far. I think this is a well intended discussion. I think there's some good ideas on the table. I'm glad we're having a public discussion. But also frankly, it's feeling rushed, particularly when we looked at the level of detail which is being added to the proposed text of this measure and needing to make a decision by next week. And I do think there's a risk of unintended consequences that we outline in our letter if, you know, trying to develop something on this timeframe. The discussion that was just had briefly based on Mark Thurman's comment about the difference between nonconforming uses and nonconforming permits. Honestly, I have no idea what that means, but I think that's exactly the type of drafting error that is something that could potentially happen on a short timeframe like this, and is a reason why I think it's very dangerous to do something under short timeframes. If we are looking at amending this, I think the forfeits, the ability to amend the entire thing by a forfeits vote rather than just specific provisions is absolutely critical. If this, you know, initiative cannot be amended by the board as conditions change, if there are vague provisions, you know, if there's threats of litigation, those things can't be addressed by the board. And I think that's really a concern equally for us and for the county. I also want to add some color to what some other folks were saying about their concern about not being able to add a nursery permit or to not be able to expand as a small farmer. The caps that are proposed right now, the issue is not just the 1,400 cap, it's also the fact that every single watershed is also capped. And nine of the 12 watersheds are proposed to be capped below their current levels for both permits and acreage. And effectively, what that could mean, and I don't think anyone here knows for sure, but what it very well could mean is you cannot become a legal farmer in Humboldt County in certain watersheds. You cannot expand from, let's say, 2,900 to 5,000 square feet. You can't obtain a nursery permit. I don't think those are policy things that anybody really wants to see happen, but I think that's what is written right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, welcome.
Good afternoon. I, for some reason, thought I had three minutes and prepared a speech around that. And wow, two minutes.
Got to get started.
Scott Bauer, Department of Fish and Wildlife. I won't go through and read my speech here, but I would like to say, you know, I think some of the things you're advancing as far as capping cultivation, those things make sense. And we talked about that years ago when we were doing the initiative, working together on that with the county. But there's some other things, you know, that, and I appreciate Supervisor Arroyo saying, you know, preferring the longer planning process because we have a lot of issues that I think we can't address in 75 words, right, through a ballot initiative. Like interim permits, it was just said that they're still, they're still going. And we have some serious concerns about that. There's no environmental analysis when it comes to these interim permits. They've been in play for six years. So we need to finish that up, right? Those are environmental impacts that are occurring with no environmental analysis. You know, water use, and that's part of the measures to talk about water use. And we all kind of know what we need to do. We need to store water from winter flows and use it in the summer. And conditions of approval often say, get your storage within two years. And what we found in the past two, three years of going to sites is people don't have the storage and they're taking water illegally. So we're kind of condoning water use that isn't really a part of what we had discussed when we did the ordinance and how we permit things. So we have a lot of issues I think we could address when we go to a more long, another look at the planning process, another look at the ordinance, you know, code enforcement, environmentally superior relocation process, conditions of approval, and look forward to hopefully discussing that at a future time with the Planning Department. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Scott, come on back. We've got one quick question from a board member for you.
Since you brought it up. What are your feelings between a ballot measure and government legislation?
You know, I can't really speak to the particular measure that is on the March ballot, but what we, you know, a process government can work. And we've worked, you know, as a partner with the Planning Department. Maybe we don't always agree on things, but you know, that process has led to a lot of improvements in the ordinance and working together. So we think continuing that discussion and continuing that process, we can make improvements to the ordinance that really don't require, you know, something like a measure, hopefully. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Appreciate keeping it nice and brief. Next, welcome.
Thank you, Supervisors. Dylan Matoll from Honeydew. I own and operate a outdoor farm in the ground under the sun. I'd like to say, first of all, I appreciate where this conversation is going. I especially appreciate Natalie, your just kind of questioning and looking back at how we got to here, where, you know, why we're having this conversation. And so it's been said before, I feel that this is somewhat of a reactionary response to this terrible initiative that we're all just having to deal with. And so, you know, my comment would be speaking to a lot of what's already been said, even by Scott Bauer from the agency, like, there is a process in place. We have been working through it. It's clumsy. It's not ideal. It's not all perfect. But we're also dealing with new regulations that have never been, you know, rolled out before. So let's keep working through this. And I would just caution against putting something out there that doesn't actually seem to have support of, I'm hearing from anyone, and doesn't seem to have really identified specifically what problems we're trying to address. So when I look at issues, I like to start with, let's all get in agreement on what the problem is, and then we can work towards finding a solution. I think that Measure A is an example of when somebody has a problem, a personal problem, in this case, two individuals with a problem with an immediate, specific individual neighbor, that they then throw this big response at that affects the entire community. And I think that's not a good way to enact policy. So I would caution against that. I would like to propose that we have a rule, that we make no more rules restricting cannabis right now. Like, we are the most restricted. There are a lot of things that could be enforced that aren't being enforced that I think lead to a lot of the complaints. We don't need new rules. We just need to maybe start, you know, dealing with what we already have. So I propose no new rules. Thank you.
No more rules on rules. That's great. Thank you. Welcome.
That makes me smile to start. Good afternoon, Madeline DeLa, Humboldt County Growers Alliance. You know, when we started, first off, I want to say thank you to all of you and to Director Ford for being responsive to your constituents' needs, because there is truth behind people who signed that ballot measure. They signed it because there is a perceived problem of too many big grows. So when we came before you a few weeks ago, we were like, okay, great, give your voters, give your constituents a choice, and just keep it to something simple. Limit the size of new cultivation. But what then happens is we want to start throwing the whole kitchen sink at it and fixing all these things on the fly in a couple of weeks. And it's like, we're going to talk about parcels, and we're going to talk about discretionary permits, and we're going to da, 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 da. It's the wish list. Now is not the time to deal with that. The time to deal with that is after March 5. Measure A is hanging over all of our head. It is a gun pointed to everyone's head, and we should not be forced to make decisions under duress. If you want to give voters a choice, keep it simple, simple, simple. Size only. When we start getting into these watershed caps, there are a lot of problems with it. Ross was talking about it. If you set your size based on attrition, that's like buying clothes based on wishful thinking that someday I'm going to be smaller. Let's not do that. Buy clothes based on what size you fit now, plus the ability to breathe. Don't go too small, if that's the direction you're going. But I think it's a bad idea. So keep it simple. You know, the response was, how do you respond to your constituent needs? You know, I'm glad that we're having this conversation. It feels a little like we're going off the rails. You know, none of us want to have the ordinance 3.0 conversation. I agree with Dylan, no more rules about rules. But I also understand what Mr. Bauer is saying. There are things that need to be fixed. We have a legitimate process for doing that. But we first need to stop Measure A. Otherwise, we're going to be stuck in a really endless cycle that's not going to get any of our needs met. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, welcome.
Good afternoon, Craig Johnson. My wife and I own and operate Alpenglow Farms in southern Humboldt County. We are in the ground, under the sun, and catch our water in the wintertime. I too have a partnership not only with Director Ford, but with Scott Bauer. We have a signed contract to abide by certain rules and intent of how we use water, how we use our land. And as you heard, Mr. Bauer, when he goes out on inspections and sees things, they have to react to those as well. And I'm bringing that up because the proponents of Measure A, which is why we are here today, have mentioned that there's not inspections happening, that we don't have this dialogue happening, and that we can't make changes. We can currently make changes. And I'm going to bring up the proponents again, and I'm going to bring them up by name, because through all this dialogue we've been having, as Betsy Watson said, we've been able to have a lot of dialogue. She's to the point where she's saying we need to have farmers markets. She's to the point where she said that water use in cannabis is nothing compared to alfalfa. And Mark Thurman said from the podium here, he said another ballot measure would seem like a red herring. So you're hearing it from all sides that we should really pump to brakes, and we appreciate all the work done, all the intention of trying to keep us going and on track and in business. And we look forward to working with you all moving forward. But we really need to break down each and every one of those line items that came forward today from the Planning Commission or Planning Director separately and address them all. And I'm for Dylan Matoll for President, no more rules.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? This is your opportunity for a comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back here to the board. For deliberation, I have Supervisor Bushnell in the queue.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for their comments and on the Zoom and here today. The issue came forward because I think Madeline said it, obviously, 8,000 people signed an initiative, and so there is thoughts and concerns out there. And additionally, constituents have been, you know, I think hitting all of us with their thoughts and concerns. And so the conversations have been good. And I think a lot of things have came to light. But also, I do think I'm going to agree with Natalie, Supervisor Arroyo, on certain things that it does feel a little rushed, and that something that could have been, you know, maybe easy, which was size, which I think is really the issue throughout the communities, and what that initiative was based on signature wise, now has grown to something a lot larger. And so with that, I'm going to make a motion that we do not continue forward with action at this time, and that we just wait and see.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell and a second by Supervisor Arroyo. Further discussion from the board, please. Supervisor Bushnell, go ahead.
Ms. Bushnell.
Ms. Bushnell.
I really also would like to thank Director Ford, because he pivoted very fast. And I know, look up, I know that you've done a lot of work. And it's not, I appreciate it. And I think all of the things that you've brought forward are things that we are going to have to address at some time. But I just really want to say thank you, and thank you for addressing concern so quickly. And I know it's been a heavy lift for you.
Great. Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Wilson.
Well, seeing where this is going, I appreciate that. This will be one last thing on my plate between now and March. So just like everybody else. So I, you know, with all the comments aside, I want to thank staff for their efforts to put something together in this sort of pressured environment. I just think that, you know, we're going to have to really deal with what's coming. And I think that this was an attempt to do that. And if it doesn't go any farther today, then that's fine. That's, like I said, I'm okay with that. I just, I just, my only concern, or not concern, is just that we're going to still have to be taking a pause between now and March with relationship to any sort of, any sort of policy work because, on this issue, because we don't know what's going to happen, right? And so, again, I kind of feel like this measure has really just basically made a year's delay in any sort of positive movement to get anything done. And that's sort of where we're at, at this time. So we'll find out what happens on the other side of March 4, and hopefully we can march, is it March 4th? Fifth, sorry, March 5. And then we can march forth to really, and I know people are not, many folks anyway, are not sort of wanting to get into 3.0, but I think it really is time for 3.0. And so we're going to have to, and I know that no one wants new rules necessarily, but there are things we got to adjust. This is an iterative process. There's, and hopefully we can, and...
This is an iterative process, and hopefully we can do better in that next round, should we have the opportunity to do so. And that's what I'm concerned about, so I think everyone should be working hard on that.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, and I think we're supposed to finish this item by 4:20. So let's see, let's go ahead and take our votes then.
Oh, no problem. We'll start with you then. Supervisor Arroyo.
It's yes for no, right?
Yes. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chairman Drone?
Yes for no.
Supervisor Bone?
Sure.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes, and once again, thanks to Director Ford.
Thank you. Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time, and thank you, Director Ford. With that, we only have two items left on the agenda. They are closed session items. We've already read that into the record. We've already taken public comment, so I believe at this point we're going to recess. And we don't know exactly when we'll be back, but it'll be probably between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock. That's my guess. So thank you all for coming to the quarters. We are in recess. Okay, we are back from our recess from closed session, and we'll report out.
Thank you, Chairman Drone. There was no reportable action taken with regard to items K-1 through K-3.
And with that, we are adjourned.
I'd like to...
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. We are not adjourned. We have a very important matter.
Well, and I just, I'm sorry. Tom Hannah, I brought this forward. Tom Hannah was 93, lived on the end of Hodgson Street there at W for 60 years, served 24 and a, 23 and a half years for the city Eureka between the planning commission and the city council. I think he was three terms on the city council. Actually moved back to Michigan, and at 90 years old, I think he served in the planning commission in Michigan on the town that he moved to. But he was 37 and a half years, he was the former principal of Winship, former principal of Jacobs Junior High, and then he was the student's school services officer, school administrator, student administrator for College of the Redwoods. So he had 37 and a half years in education. He gets to join his beloved wife, Eddie, who passed away a couple of years ago. And so my sympathies go out to Kim and Lori and Nancy and their families. Tom was a, he did, he appraised and did Indian artifacts from being up on the Klamath and stuff. He has, I've got one of his books that he wrote, and he's a very knowledgeable man, great guy. Sorry to see him go. I'm sorry to see him move away. Now I'm sorry to see his pass. So, Tom, thanks for the memories.
All right, and we will adjourn in his honor. And I think in the future, let's go ahead and do these at the beginning of the meeting.
I said that to...
You have.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're going to start doing those. I would like to set a, you know, whatever, let's do that. Let's do them at the beginning of the meetings when people are actually present. Seems to make sense, so. Okay, thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned.